Seeing as we have a quorum, I'll go ahead and call to order this regular session of the Bloomington Common Council on Tuesday, September 30th. Will the Clerk please call the roll? Councilmember Rallo?
Here.
Piedmont Smith?
Here.
Stasburg?
Here.
Daley?
Here.
Zulik?
Here.
Rosenbarger?
Here.
Asari?
Here.
Great. Thank you. Before I do our agenda summation for this evening, I'm going to start off the meeting with a point of interest, which is something I often do, or I nearly always do, for our regular sessions. And tonight, I thought it appropriate to remind everyone why we're here oddly on a Tuesday night, because usually our regular sessions occur on Wednesday evenings. But tomorrow is the first day of the, or sorry, is the Jewish holiday Yom Kippur. And Yom Kippur is celebrated starting just before sunset on the 10th day of, and I hope I'm saying, I'm pronouncing this right, Tishrei, until just after the following nightfall. And this year, it corresponds roughly to October 1st to 2nd. And for those of you who, like me, don't know anything about the Hebrew calendar, I went down a little rabbit hole looking at that today, it doesn't follow the Solar Base Gregorian calendar, and so that's why Jewish holidays are not always on the same day of the year. They kind of float in the way that there are several holidays in other cultures that kind of float throughout the year. And Tishrei is actually the first month of the Hebrew calendar, so there's several holidays during this time for that faith tradition. And Yom Kippur is considered one of the holiest days of the year and is translated to mean "day of atonement." And Yom Kippur is traditionally celebrated by fasting and otherwise abstaining from other physical comforts, and going to synagogue, and praying for forgiveness and repentance, and participating in special religious services during that day. So for any of our community members here in Bloomington who may be celebrating Yom Kippur, may you have a meaningful fast. Then moving on to our agenda summation for the evening, we don't have any minutes for approval, so we will jump right into reports tonight. First, we will have reports from council members, then we will have the mayor and city offices, and there are no reports from the mayor and city offices this evening, council committees, where we will have a report from the special fiscal committee and a short conversation about that. And then we will have our first period of reports from the public, so that's the first time that a member of the public who wishes to speak tonight can speak to an item not on our agenda, and they'll have three minutes during that period to do so. After reports, we will have appointments to boards and commissions, and we do have some appointments to boards and commissions this evening. And then we will have four pieces of legislation for first reading. We will start with ordinance 2025-32, amending Title 20, which is the Unified Development Ordinance Regarding Use Table Amendment Urban Agriculture Commercial. Then we will have ordinance 2025-38, fixing the salaries of officers and employees of police and fire departments for the year 2026. Then we'll do first reading for ordinance 2025-39, fixing the salaries of appointed deputies and employees for the Bloomington City Clerk for the year 2026. And then we will wrap up with ordinance 2025-40, to fix the salaries of appointed officers, non-union, and AFSCME employees for the year 2026. After those first readings, which we don't discuss things on first readings, so we'll just read those into the record, we will have our legislation for second readings and resolutions. These are items that will be discussed and potentially voted on this evening. We will start with resolution 2025-17, re-initiating a proposal to amend Title 20, which is the UDO regarding affordability incentives and planned unit developments. Then we'll have resolution 2025-18, approving the naming of the Stadium District in the area around Miller Showers Park. And then we will have appropriation ordinance 2025-08, transferring funds from the General Fund to the Fiber Connectivity Fund. And then appropriation ordinance 2025-09, to appropriate general fund expenditures that were not appropriated last year. That's kind of a cleanup appropriation, because sometimes adjustments have to be made mid-year. Then we will have ordinance 2025-35, amending Title 9, which is the Bloomington Municipal Code entitled "Water," and that is a rate adjustment. And then we will have ordinance 2025-36, authorizing acquisition, construction, and installation for certain extensions and improvements to the Water Works Utility of Bloomington, and issuing bonds. After those pieces of legislation, we will have an additional period of public comment for items not on the agenda. So if you have something else that you would like to share with us that is not on the agenda, that will be another time to do so, and you may speak at one of those two periods of general public comment. And of course, each piece of the legislation that is discussed tonight under second readings and resolutions also has a period of public comment attached to that. We will have any notes about the council schedule, and then we will adjourn. So after all of that, no minutes for approval, so we have reports from council members. So let's start down at the far end with councilmember Asari. Do you have a report this evening?
Report, thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Rosenbarger?
Yes, thank you. Tonight, I just wanted to take a minute to, I guess, talk about a few sad things and offer some condolences. On Friday night, Sean Sullivan was shot in the downtown Bloomington area, and actually ended up happening on my property. I live in multifamily housing, and it happened right there, next to the B-line and the convention center. And I know it's hit a lot of people really hard, and I didn't really prepare sentences like I should, I guess. I just want to say, like, this was such a sad event. It was like two minutes of people arguing, and then one gunshot that went off, and the Bloomingtonian has reported that these people did not know each other. And it's just like so sad for someone to get murdered in the heat of the moment or any time. And I, so I just want to offer condolences to the Sullivan family, and to let anyone know if they would like to contribute to funeral expenses, there's a GoFundMe that you can find on the Bloomingtonians website. Another sad thing that happened, someone downtown Bobby was assaulted by two other men on Friday night. And there's also a GoFundMe for Bobby on the Bloomingtonians website for dental work. He is missing a lot of teeth, and could need some help. And then the third thing is, it was just recently the third anniversary of the murder of Nate Stratton, who was riding a scooter on North Walnut Street when Madeline Howard left Kilroy's Con Kirkwood, driving drunk, and ran him over. I wanted to say thank you so much to Jonathan Frey, who just did a very long article on the life of Nate in the IDS. So if you all get a chance to read that, it is very touching. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Zulik?
Yes, I do have a report, and also, I second everything that you said, so, thank you. Recently, the Food and Beverage Tax Advisory Committee, also known as FABTAC, which is a lot easier to say, met for the first time this ye, this year on Friday, and I am happy to announce that I was elected chair of that committee, and now have to produce the annual report within a month. So that's exciting. And that's the only report I have. Thank you.
Thank you, and congratulations. Courtney, sorry, councilmember Daley?
No report, thank you, just congratulations, councilmember Zulik, thank you for taking that on.
Thank you. Down at the other end, councilmember Rallo?
Yes, thanks to councilmember Rosenbarger for describing those terrible incidents. I won't, I won't expound on those, but I will say that something unexpected happened today. I was driving on Hillside, and I saw the aftermath of a deer-vehicle collision, and it was 5:00 in the afternoon, and, which was rather surprising, I think most of them happen in the evening. And it just brought to mind that over 100, on average, deer-vehicle collisions occur every year on, in Monroe County, many of them in Bloomington, many of them on thoroughfares like Hillside. I think that this, again, reminds me, and maybe others, that deer management would be something advisable for our community to consider, not just because of the damage caused by the deer, or the terrible situation of a deer that is killed in that manner, or maimed, and wanders off to die maybe weeks later of sepsis or something horrible. I think we've all seen deer with, you know, broken legs hobbling through neighborhoods. And we profess to be a community that cares about animals, so we really should pay mind to this. But besides the humane aspect, there is also urban agriculture, which we're going to be considering in the near future. People try to grow food in their yards. I think it's, you know, it's unfair to people, especially low-income people, who can't afford to build fences, to try to exclude deer. And there's also tick-borne diseases that have become more and more prevalent, and there's a number of them in our community that people are subject to. So it's something that I think that we need to attend to. I know that it's sort of dropped off the radar in certain respects, and I was on a deer task force for nearly two years. We made recommendations, those are dated now. I think that we could revisit it, there are probably advances, probably in birth control that we could revisit that could be applied, we might be able to get grants for it, et cetera. But in any case, I'll just conclude by saying, the peak deer collisions happen this time of year in October through January, that's the rut, and so they're more active. The bucks are chasing does, and they run out into traffic, and so, with the cooler temperatures. So we should really be, pay mind to driving defensively, going to speed limits, and trying to avoid collisions, just for your own sake. That's all I have, thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Piedmont Smith?
I also wanted to comment on the violence against unhoused people this weekend. As councilmember Rosenbarger said, there was one who was, one community member who was shot and killed on Friday evening on Madison, and then there were at least two other unhoused members of our community who were beaten up in downtown Bloomington on Kirkwood. Of course, this is unacceptable. It highlights the vulnerability of this portion of our population in Bloomington and nationwide. I just wanted to read a little bit from Dr. Margot Cuschel, who wrote an article for the Bennie Off Homelessness and Housing Initiative a few years ago. She writes, "Without a door to lock, people without housing are vulnerable. Dramatic cases drive headlines, but violence directed at homeless people is constant, mundane, devastating. On top of that, due to longstanding effects of structural racism, homophobia, and transphobia, Black and Native Americans, as well as lesbian, gay, and transgender Americans are overrepresented in the homeless population. Furthering their vulnerability, the homeless population is aging in this country. As a physician and researcher who studies homelessness, I hear from patients who share how frightened they are, not just when there's a potential serial murderer a law about, but every day in their lives. Despite such violence, instead of focusing on safety for our unhoused neighbors, the misperception that people without homes are perpetrators rather than victims of violence contributes to both criminalizing homelessness and dehumanizing people who don't have housing. Exaggerated attention on rare violent incidents that individuals experiencing homelessness commit, and emphasizing their housing status, leads to policies supporting criminalization of survival behaviors like sleeping, sitting, and living in vehicles, while doing nothing to improve safety. Criminalization diverts resources, worsens impoverishment, increases incarceration, and poses barriers to exiting homelessness. It also makes it harder for individuals without homes to report threats or protect themselves. Fear of people who are homeless, rather than compassion on their behalf, contributes to dehumanization, seeing them as less than and not deserving of our protection, care, or equitable policies. These fears in turn contribute to violence against people without homes, rates that appear to be increasing, and lessen political will toward lasting solutions. Finally, the false perception of people who are homeless as perpetrators contributes to challenges inciting shelters and housing to meet their needs." So I appreciate councilmember Rosenbarger calling out the names of those who were attacked this weekend, or two of the names, but this is a national problem, and something we need to pay close attention to locally, from not just when these terrible public violence incidents occur, but as we move on in government and policymaking. I also, on a separate topic, I wanted to mention the passing of Barry Lesso, who was the longtime director of the United Way of Monroe County. I did meet Barry a few times in the last 20 years, but I didn't know him that well, so I wanted to just read a comment that the Community Kitchen posted on Facebook. "Barry Lesso was a passionate, tireless leader of our community. Even before his years as executive director of United Way, Barry was making an impact on local service, social service organizations by helping us understand the importance and process of strategic planning, how board members should carry out the roles of governance and oversight, and how to build consensus around topics. Community Kitchen specifically benefited from his direction and support for strategic planning. As United Way Director, Barry listened and worked with agencies to find solutions to community or funding issues. He listened to local agencies and pushed back against eliminating United Way member agencies when the pressure came from outside our community to do so. When state-level funding programs were threatened, Barry brought us together to collectively make our voices heard. Our community has been fortunate to benefit from many compassionate leaders and champions of our county over the years, and Barry sits among them. Barry was often larger-than-life, with a really bad joke to open an event, but humble and ready to listen, learn, and support when needed. We will miss him. Rest well, friend. You earned it." That's all I have.
Thank you. I also have a report tonight, kind of shifting a little bit into the national sector of public health and vaccination. And it's something that I've, you know, this was in the news a couple of weeks ago, and our news cycles seem to filter in and out so quickly, but I just was not able to talk about this in terms of our meeting schedule and reports. But if you weren't aware of that, Robert Kennedy is advocating to really do a lot of changes in terms of recommended vaccinations for children especially, and changed various requirements related to, for example, the COVID vaccination. But I want to focus tonight a little bit on childhood vaccinations, because those are kind of under assault, and actually, the state of Florida has a proposal put forth to eliminate all requirements for any childhood vaccines. And I wanted to share a little bit about my personal story with this. So my daughter was born in 2008, and vaccines were still this, like, controversial thing at that point as well. And it was actually before some of those studies related to autism and vaccines were totally debunked, which they are now. But at the time, you know, it's my first kid, and I'm pregnant, right? And I'm doing all of the possible research, because if you know me at all, you know that I do all of the possible research on all of the things, right? And one of the things that I feel like I don't hear about people doing enough research on is the risk associated with the actual disease itself. Because when you do that research, I mean, there's risk, right? Sure, there's risk of vaccines, there's, like, risk of every single thing that you could ever possibly think of doing. And you have to make this, this risk assessment, right, for your entire life, and, and when you're pregnant and you're about to have a kid, or even when you do have a kid, you're making all of these risk assessments every day. Oh, you, and I have teenagers now, right? Oh, you want to go out with your friend in their car? You're making a risk assessment of whether or not you, you let them do that. So when they're little and they're in utero, you're making this risk assessment and going, okay, like, when they come out, what am I going to do about this vaccine thing that seems like maybe is controversial? And one of the risk assessments that I made was, what are these diseases that my kid is actually getting inoculated against? What would they do? How likely is it that my kid might catch one of them? And then what would happen if they did? And then you have to weigh that against, well, what might happen if they get the vaccine? And you have to make that assessment, or I guess you don't have to, you can just not think about it and just do it, right? But I made that assessment. And one of the things, I guess, that I want to highlight here are some of the, the assessments that I made in my situation, that didn't necessarily follow what the medical establishment would necessarily recommend. Because in my situation, I was a stay-at-home parent, my kid was very not exposed to things, right? And if they were exposed, I could be like, oh, you know, if they get chickenpox, well, we're going to be home for a few days, and it might be miserable, but I'll, I'll just wait and see on that one, right? Oh, if we get the flu, we're going to be home for a few days, and we might be miserable, but, you know, I'm not going to worry about that one. But there are other ones that, like, oh, you get the measles, you could have, like, these lifelong problems with the measles. And at some point, with something like chickenpox, it could become, you know, it's much more serious to get chickenpox the older you get. I don't know if people, like, realize that. I was teaching high school once, and one of my high school students got chickenpox. She was out of school for two solid weeks, maybe even three, and then on, like, half-days for another, like, two weeks. It was really, really serious and really bad, because she was so old when she got it. So you've got to make those risk assessments. And so I guess my conclusion here is, you've got to do your due diligence, and it's not just about the vaccine, you know, might give your kid a fever, or, you know, these small chances of vaccine side effects. It's also about the much larger chances of side effects from the actual diseases itself, if your kid lives through that with something like measles, or something like polio, which seems to be eradicated, but is also on the question mark list of people whether or not they seem to want to get the polio vaccine. Like, these are serious things, and very minimal side effects from vaccines, potentially larger side effects from actually getting those diseases themselves. And it, there really are some potential public health catastrophes waiting to happen if we reduce our herd immunity with some of these things. So that is my report for this evening. Moving on to council committee reports, since we don't have any reports from the mayor and city offices, councilmember Piedmont Smith, I will hand it to you for special fiscal committee reports and conversation.
Well, the special fiscal committee met recently and talked about setting the salaries for elected officials for 2026. We had, we kind of reviewed briefly the conclusions of the ad hoc salary committee that met last fall, and came up with recommendations for salary increases, and also talked about the amendments that was then passed by the council to bring down the, to reduce the increases, but still provide an increase for council members and the mayor and the clerk. So we felt it was important to check back in with the full council on this issue, because there were some strong viewpoints last year, and we didn't really know what direction to go this year. So that's why we're here tonight, just trying to get some more feedback from folks who aren't on that committee, or even if you are on it and you have some new ideas to share. I just wanted to open it up to, to you all. I provided lots of background information in the packet, so hopefully you had a chance to refresh your memory on this topic.
Do councilmembers have thoughts or questions around salary for elected officials for next year? Councilmember Rosenbarger?
Hello, I, I'm sorry, I did not prepare to have the discussion tonight. I guess that part was in your memo, but I just read through it and looked at everything before. Is there a way to do it? Is everyone ready tonight? I don't know, that's my question. Are we throwing out answers, or what exactly do you, like, I would love to discuss it.
Well, we, our timeline is that we need to pass the ordinance before the end of the year. If there are going to be substantial fiscal impacts, then the sooner the better, since we have our vote on the budget coming up soon. But yeah, we could, we could hold a discussion another evening, I suppose, if we do it relatively soon.
As a point of reference, our next regular session is not until the 22nd, I believe. So it, next week is budget hearings, is the vote on the budget, and then the week after that is the deliberation session, and then the week after that is our next regular session. Councilmember Daley?
I mean, I'm prepared to make, you know, to share my feelings right now, if that's what we're cool with. I think considering all of the SB 1 and the federal funding, and all the cuts that are happening to budgets everywhere, and everybody tightening their belts, I'm highly uncomfortable with the idea of increases for elected officials right now.
Even COLA increases?
I'd be open to discussing those, but anything beyond that, I, I feel strongly would be inappropriate for us.
Okay, thank you. Are there other comments? Councilmember Rosenbarger, do you want to try to say something off the cuff?
No, I do not. I mean, I was on the fiscal committee last year, where we put in a lot of time research, hired a consultant, you know, and that was just kind of dismissed. Thank you to this current committee for, for reading that again, because I do think it was just, yep, really dismissed at council, which is just disheartening, but that's not really a professional feeling. It's just disappointing when work goes into something and other people don't tend to read it. I would, I don't know, I'd rather have a different kind of discussion, I guess. Two of our council members aren't here tonight, and I think in this case, it's important that all of council is, because, I don't know, seven out of nine doesn't feel great for talking about our salaries, and I think they are too, that tend to have pretty big opinions. Yeah, or perspectives on things, so I don't know. I don't, I don't think I'm the only one that missed the discussion point of this, so I would just like to do it a different time, whether in regular session or something more casual, too. A committee of the whole, or a part of the deliberation.
Councilmember Piedmont Smith?
First, I do want to mention that even if we have budgetary impacts, there is a possibility of additional appropriation ordinance, as long as we have the support of the mayor's But I think, I mean, what's important to me is at some point getting to a rational, logical basis for setting these salaries. That was presented last year, the results were a little shocking, as far as the price But the, then it was kind of, the logical structure was kind of, you know, an asterisk was added to that, and then we'd reduce the amounts, and the asterisk said, let's look at what people in other cities are making in these positions, which I also think is valid. I, I do think it's important to have a valid basis, and not just, this is what they've been paid in the past, and, you know, this is what they're being paid in Fisher's, or whatever. So I do want to attain that before the end of this council term. I think that some of the hesitation about significant increases was because we are voting on our own salaries. And it, it never feels quite right to say, well, I deserve to make, you know, X amount of money. And as some colleagues have pointed out, we did run for these positions knowing what the salary was. But part of the problem, as was pointed out, is that since it's not a salary that anybody can live off of, it does limit who can run and hold these offices. So even if we don't reach a logical way of thinking about and analyzing and recommending salary levels, this year, I salary levels, this year, I do want to get that accomplished before the next council term.
Other, Councilmember Rosenbarger?
I guess, one logistical point in all this, last year, the mayor sort of told us, you know, this is your job, go and do it, helped us hire a consultant, or, you know, we used what the administration used for their HR studies, and then in the final hour, called a couple council members and said, I'm not supporting that, right? So unless there's no increase for council, or just the COLA, or just a minimum for everyone. So I guess I would ask the committee, and you can't know, but like, if, you know, if the mayor's not going to be on board, I think she needs to say that ahead of time before you all put a lot of work into it again, because, yeah, it was just sort of a lot of work for nothing. And, and again, I guess it's almost impossible to ask, since last year, she said it was up to us and then would not support it. So I guess I don't even know what to do there, but potentially it's worth considering, or maybe getting something in writing.
Other comments? If there are no other comments on this, then we can move on to the next agenda item, which I'm hesitating on because I'm writing down notes on something, so. So then, we're moving on to reports from the public, if there are no other comments on salaries. Councilmember Piedmont Smith?
Well, I just wanted to inquire, since the president of council sets the agenda, if you would be willing to put this back on the agenda sometime in October?
Yeah, I mean, I think that that would have to be October 22nd. I mean, I do want to, want to point out that in the memo that was included with this, it does state, actually in a couple places, to, that we wanted to bring the issue of elected salaries back to the full council for discussion, intending to do that as part of the report during September 30th, and then again at the end, please review these materials and come prepared to discuss how you would like to proceed. So it, it feels a little frustrating to me right now that it was written there, and then if people weren't prepared to discuss it, it kind of feels like, like we do, you know, as somebody who's on the fiscal committee, like, we're supposed to have a meeting next week, I believe, where we were going to discuss this, and we do need to, you know, in terms of timing, get this ordinance in there. So I guess it's a little frustrating to have to put it on the agenda tonight, because people weren't prepared in the way that the chair of the committee that I'm on asked us to be prepared. But sure, it can go on the agenda again for further discussion on the 22nd, if that's what needs to happen. Does that address your concern, and would you like it on the agenda again? Councilmember, sorry?
Just a proposal, because in response to what Councilmember Rosenbarger said, that I guess there is the option of making one of the fiscal committee meetings, so, you know, we have one this coming week, but we would have one two weeks later, just making that a committee of the whole meeting, so those who want to come and comment can do that. So that might give a sort of, you know, compromised way of being able to talk about it in a more relaxed fashion.
I'm not sure that I would want to make it a committee of the whole meeting, because committee of the whole is such a challenge in some ways, but we could call it a work session for council if there was going to be a quorum of full council members there. We could absolutely throw that in as like a special meeting, essentially, so.
Because then there's also not this sort of artificial time, well, not really artificial, we have like so many things on the agenda, but, you know, the sort of time constraint, and it's up to the committee itself, but the next one's, the next one's this, this coming Wednesday, right?
Yep, our next, the next fiscal committee meeting is on Wednesday.
You could do it this next one, actually, we have enough time to notice it, so.
Right, is Wednesday, October 8th, from 1:30 to 3:00. So is that a time that any other council members that are, because there's four of us on the committee, so we would need one more council member to be, that would be a quorum of councils, so I'm seeing one. Councilmember Rosenbarger, is that a time that, yeah, wait, 1:30? 1:30 to 3:00 on the 8th? So you were able to, to make that? Okay, so we will work on re-noticing that meeting in whatever way it is that we have to re-notice that meeting.
As a special session of council?
Yeah. I think so, or a work session, but I think that work sessions end up being this like fuzzy thing, too, so I think it's just a special session.
It's still a special session.
Yeah, okay. Does that work for you, Councilmember Piedmont Smith, in terms of that, like, is the fiscal committee meeting, and I'm not sure what else we were supposed to discuss that night?
My only concern would be is that we have two council members who are not here tonight, who may also not be able to participate on Wednesday, the 8th, so. So I guess I still would prefer to tag it on to either the discussion session on October 15th, or the regular session on October 22nd.
How about we inquire with those two council members?
Okay.
I guess, I know I would like to discuss this, but I don't know if other people want to discuss it, so if nobody does, then we don't have to meet. I mean, no one else has really weighed in, right? About whether or not they want to discuss it.
Well, Councilmember Daley, I think weighed in with her thoughts on it, that seemed pretty firm, so.
I mean, because I can have a conversation with Isabel, you know, if that's all that needs to happen, is what I'm saying, or, I'm sorry, Councilmember Piedmont Smith, because if nobody else has anything to say, then I don't need to try to make everyone meet, you know?
Councilmember Piedmont Smith?
First of all, if we, if we have a special session, we need to check with the clerk's office and the council staff for their availability, but perhaps we can not make a decision now and, and check in with colleagues who are unable to be here today. Of course, any colleague is welcome to contact any member of the fiscal committee and give their input that way.
So I think we're ending this by saying we're taking all of that under advisement, and we'll figure it out. I think that that's the, and technically, that fiscal committee meeting is already, there's usually a member of the clerk's office there, so I would assume that that could. What was that? What would you like to say? Clerk Bolden?
Just to clarify, are you responding to my request to speak now by saying, what would you like to say?
Yes, I did not see that you had a request to speak. Somebody said that, that you did, but when I looked over at you, you didn't seem like you were ready, so.
I understand, I was just waiting for you to finish or acknowledge the request. So, anyway, Councilmember Piedmont Smith actually addressed the concern about clerk staff, it was already noticed, and yes, there is usually a staff member there to keep a memo, although it would probably shift who's responsible and who will be in the room if you change it to a special session. I do think it would be a nice idea to do it on the deliberative session night, as opposed to during the fiscal committee meeting, and it would be nice if you actually invited the other elected officials who are impacted by your salary ordinance officially, as opposed to letting us hear about it secondhand or after the fact and having to insert ourselves into your discussion, as I just did. Thank you.
Okay. So we'll figure that out. I think that's the conclusion. Does anybody else have any, any other comments about this? All right, let's move on to our first session of reports from the public. So if you are a member of the public who would like to speak to an item not on the agenda, this is a time to do that. If you're in chambers, you can go ahead and make your way to the podium, you would have up to three minutes. If you're online, you can use the reactions tab to raise your hand, or you can send a chat message to the host. I don't see anybody moving in chambers, is there anybody online who would like to speak?
Yes, and I'll unmute them now.
Wonderful, thank you. Please state your name for the record when you're unmuted, and then you will have three minutes.
Yes, this is Kevin Keel. If, as a citizen of Indiana, if anybody from any city in Indiana asks me what I would suggest on how to compensate elected officials, I would think a good pinpoint, a baseline to use would be the median household income. Like, for the median household income for Bloomington is $50,0156, per the Bloomington Economic Development Corporation. I'd say, hey, that's a good figure. Take 50% of that, you got the city council, four times that, the mayor, maybe. I mean, it gives you a good idea of where you really sit in comparison to the median, we're not talking the real taxpayer, the individual citizen out there. I think that would be a great benchmark to use. So I suggest, I would choose to ask for any elected official. So, anyway, I'll just throw that out. Good luck.
Are there, are there any other folks, either in chambers or online, who would like to make public comment?
There's no one else online.
All right. Then we will move on to appointments to boards and commissions, which I do believe we have some. Does anybody have a motion related? Councilmember Zulak?
On behalf of interview team committee C, on the Historic Preservation Commission, we recommend that Drew Heron be appointed to seat C4, and for the Arts Commission, we recommend that Lynn Hooker be appointed to seat C3.
Thank you, we have a motion and a second related to interview committee team C recommendations. Are there any council member questions or comments related to these recommendations? Attorney Lainer, can we do a voice vote for these approvals, or do we need to do roll call for appointments to boards and commissions?
I think that you can do a voice vote for these.
Great. All those in favor of those two appointments, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you, that motion passes unanimously. Thank you to Drew Heron and Lynn Hooker for your service. Councilmember Daley?
Thank you. Interview committee team B would like to recommend for the Transportation Commission, the appointment of Aibon Binder to seat C1.
Second.
We have a motion and a second related to committee team B recommendations, are there any questions or comments regarding this appointment? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you, that motion passes 7-0, and thank you to Aibon Binder for their service. And Councilmember, sorry?
Interview committee team A would like to recommend Joshua Brewer to seat C3 of the Board of Housing Quality Appeals.
Second.
Thank you, we have a motion and a second related to interview committee team A recommendations, are there any questions or comments from the council?
Quick comment. I do think that this, this particular seat, I think, illustrates how important it is for us to be thinking about making, figuring out a way to make our appointments a bit more quickly to, to boards and commissions. It was reported, I think widely, that, you know, the Board on Housing Appeals wasn't able to meet on, on an occasion, because they didn't, they weren't able to meet Cora. And so I, I think that, we've talked about this when we've talked about liaisons, but I really, really think that this illustrates the sense that what we want to do is have the liaison make the recommendation to the body of council, rather than have these committees meet, because it's just really hard to get everybody in a room together, than to do the interviews and all of these type of things, when sometimes it's sort of a matter of being able to do important city business, so, just as a reminder.
Okay, are there any other comments or questions related to this appointment? All right, all of those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you, that motion passes 7-0 as well, and thank you to Joshua Brewer for his service. Moving on to legislation for first readings.
I move that appropriation ordinance 2025-32.
First readings?
That's what I had.
Ordinance 2025-32.
Huh, oh, it's just ordinance, not appropriation.
Yes, it's just ordinance.
Forgive me, rewind, do-over. I move that ordinance 2025-32 be introduced and read by the clerk by title and synopsis only.
Second.
Thank you, it's been moved and seconded to introduce ordinance 2025-32, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you, will the clerk please read?
Ordinance 2025-32 to amend Title 20 of the Bloomington Municipal Code regarding used table amendment, urban agriculture commercial. The synopsis is as follows, this amendment introduces a new land use, urban agriculture commercial. This new land use would allow some expanded services and offerings within the city for urban agriculture uses beyond the current similar land use of urban agriculture non-commercial. The new proposed land use would allow for an outdoor education component, onsite employees, and year-round retail sales for produce grown on the property. This use is proposed to be a conditional accessory use in the R1, R4, RM, and RH districts, and a permitted use in all other districts. There are use-specific standards, a new definition, and related adjustments to the numbering of preceding sections of the UDO. This ordinance is in accordance with Indiana Code 3674600.
Thank you. We will hear that ordinance on October 22nd at our next regular session.
I move that ordinance 2025-38 be introduced and read by the clerk by title and synopsis only.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to introduce ordinance 2025-38, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you, will the clerk please read?
Yeah, just one second, please. Ordinance 2025-38, an ordinance fixing the salaries of officers and employees of the police and fire departments of, for the city of Bloomington, Indiana, for the year 2026. The synopsis is as follows, this ordinance sets the minimum and maximum salary rates for all sworn fire and police personnel for the year 2026, in accordance with council-approved collective bargaining agreements.
Thank you.
I move that ordinance 2025-39 be introduced and read by the clerk by title and synopsis only.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to introduce ordinance 2025-39, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you, will the clerk please read?
Ordinance 2025-39 to fix the salaries of appointed deputies and employees of the Bloomington City Clerk for the city of Bloomington, Monroe County, Indiana, for the year 2026. The synopsis is as follows, this salary ordinance establishes the 2026 maximum salaries for Bloomington City Clerk employees.
Thank you.
I move that ordinance 2025-40 be introduced and read by the clerk by title and synopsis only.
Second.
Thank you, it's been moved and seconded to introduce ordinance 2025-40, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you, will the clerk please read?
Ordinance 2025-40, an ordinance to fix the salaries of appointed officers, non-union, and AFSMI employees for all the departments of the city of Bloomington, Monroe County, Indiana, for the year 2026. The synopsis is as follows, ordinance 2025-40 sets the maximum 2026 salary for all appointed officers, non-union, and AFSMI employees for all the departments of the city of Bloomington, Indiana.
Thank you so much, as I already mentioned, our next regular session is October 22nd, so those four ordinances will be heard for second reading on that date. Now, we're moving on to legislation for second readings and resolutions, and I'm passing the gavel to Vice President, Councilmember Piedmont Smith, for this.
All right.
Resolution 2025-17 be introduced and read by the clerk by title and synopsis only.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Will the clerk please read?
Resolution 2025-17 to initiate a proposal to amend Title 20 of the Bloomington Municipal Code by restating Resolution 2025-10 regarding preparation of a proposal to amend Chapter 20.04.110 and 20.02.040. The synopsis is as follows, this res- 20.04.110 and 20.02.040. The synopsis is as follows. This resolution, sponsored by Councilmember Stossberg, initiates the prior proposal in Resolution 2025-10 adopted on July 16, 2025, which directs the Plan Commission to prepare amendments to the Bloomington Municipal Code Title 20 to make changes to the affordable housing incentive qualifying standards.
I move that Resolution 2025-17 be adopted.
Second.
All right. And Councilmember Stossberg, would you like to present this resolution, please?
Yeah, this is actually the third time that I've presented this resolution, so I hope we can make this nice and quick for those in the public who maybe aren't aware. Last November, I, this is a resolution to request the Plan Commission to modify affordability incentive eligibility requirements and the affordability standards for the planned unit developments or PUDs. Last November, I initiated this originally, and there are certain state guidelines around how long the Plan Commission has both to hear it initially and then to vote on a recommendation to forward to council after that. And for the first resolution from last November, the Plan Commission heard the initial proposal but then did not vote on it with the required time. So I re-initiated it with a couple modifications on July 16. And Plan Commission has failed in 60 days to hold a hearing with regard to this. So I am re-initiating it again. It is an identical resolution, except there's a little language in there about re-initiating that our staff was so kind as to help me with. So if anybody has any questions about this, let me know.
Thank you. Are there questions for Councilmember Stossberg? And I see Planning and Transportation Director Hiddle is here as well, if there are questions. Yes, Councilmember Sari.
This is the second time, right, that, thoughts on, I mean, you're on the Plan Commission. Like, what's the delay here? And what can we do? Because it sort of seems a bit, yeah, strange that we're having to re-engage on a thing that's written in code.
Well, the first delay was partly because there were two pieces of the original resolution, and one of them just took a little bit longer in terms of engagement. This second time, I don't think that there's a good reason except overlooking it. I'm not sure if Director Hiddle wants to speak to that or not, and it looks like he's standing up.
Thank you. The Department of Planning and Transportation, there's not a good reason. We mishandled this twice, and so we've put some safeguards in place so that doesn't happen again. We put checks and balances in the form of the mayor's Legislative Affairs Specialist and clarified our positional roles as to who is responsible for making sure that this happens. So no, we don't have a good reason as to why we've been back twice.
Can I ask a follow-up question?
Yes.
Is there anything that we can do? I mean, because, I mean, there's a sort of cosmic, or cosmic maybe elevates this a little bit too much, but there is a functional matter here of, you know, that council has a role to play, and if we initiate that role, that, you know, if there's a breakdown, I mean, that's a failure of our system of government. And so is there something that we can do as a council to better support? Like, I'm grateful that you acknowledge that, you know, that it's on your side, but it's like, what can we do to build that capacity or clarity or whatever needs to happen so that, so that things that we want to see done are delayed?
No, there's, I don't think there's anything. I think it's on our end, and I think it's anomalous. It's a rare mistake that happened to have happened twice. And I don't think it'll happen again.
Awesome. Thank you.
But no, I appreciate asking the question, but I don't know if there's anything different council could do.
Excellent. Thank you, sir.
Councilmember Stossberg?
I do want to highlight that after the first time this happened, our council staff created a calendar, and I don't know for sure how widely they shared it. I know that they shared it with me in terms of my role as president, I think, just to put these types of resolutions on the calendar with the deadlines, and then in our legislative calendar as well, in terms of, like, that's the internal document that staff and I use to track legislation. There's also that comment, like, when is this due by in that document, so that then on our end, we can track dates better. And that is something that I recall mentioning that to planning staff, but if planning staff was uncertain about whose exact responsibility it was to get it on, because, I mean, as the representative to the Plan Commission, I believe this response is already written, essentially, in terms of the UDO changes that staff was going to propose to Plan Commission. Because we've already heard it at Plan Commission, we've already had a presentation from Anna Killian Hansen from hand around affordability, because several Plan Commission members wanted to understand that better and the whole thing better. And so the proposal's there, it just didn't get the finishing push of getting on the agenda this time, and I'm glad that that's been internally addressed.
Let me just see if anybody else has a question. Any other councilmembers have questions? Okay, go ahead, Councilmember Sari.
Quick follow-up, and then I'll leave maybe a question to our attorneys, is that what type of recourse do we have as council when, because again, I mean, we're talking about a question of law, and then a thing just not being done, and we're going, eh, do it again. So I'm somewhat concerned, not in this, just this single instance, but just in the larger sense, that if, you know, if council can pass a thing according to Indiana Code, and that that can just, whether for, by mistake, in this case, a mistake, but, you know, I could imagine another instance, somebody just ignores it. Not Director Hiddle, not the Planning Department, just in the broader sense. What recourse do we have as a council?
Often, the Indiana Code will state what that recourse is. In the 600 series, with respect to this type of text amendment to zoning ordinances, there isn't a stated recourse. The statute indicates that when the proposal is initiated by council, then certain things have to be performed by the Plan Commission, such as notice, hearing, and then a recommendation being made back to council for its action as a legislative body. Generally, there potentially could be some type of legal action taken in court. It's unclear what exactly that might be, though.
All right. Any other questions from councilmembers? Okay, we'll go to the public. Is there any member of the public who would like to comment on Resolution 2025-17? Don't see anybody getting up here in the chambers. Is there anybody on Zoom who's raising their hand electronically?
No, there isn't.
Okay. All right. We'll come back to council. Are there any final comments? Councilmember Stossberg?
Thank you for what I hope is a yes vote on this for a third time.
Okay. I will just say that it's disappointing that we have to do this a third time. I want to thank our council staff who kind of stepped in to try to help the situation by creating an online tool or calendar with all of the deadlines per Indiana Code related to planning issues. And I look forward to actually seeing the UDO revision that we'll make, hopefully will work with other tools that we have to make more affordable housing or accessible housing available to residents, because we sure need it. Any other final comments? All right. Clerk Bolden, could you please call the roll on Resolution 2025-17?
Absolutely. Councilmember Rallo?
Yes.
Councilmember Piedmont Smith?
Yes.
Stossberg?
Yes.
Councilmember Daly?
Yes.
Councilmember Zulik?
Yes.
Councilmember Rosenberg?
Yes.
Councilmember Sari?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. And that passes by a vote of 7-0. And we'll now move on to the next resolution.
I move that Resolution 2025-18 be introduced and read by the clerk by title and synopsis only.
Second. All in favor of reading Resolution 2025-18, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Will the clerk please read?
Resolution 2025-18 to approve the naming of the stadium district in the area surrounding Miller Showers Park. The synopsis is as follows. This resolution, co-sponsored by Councilmember Stossberg, names the area around Miller Showers Park as the stadium district. This naming will foster community pride, promote economic growth, and enhance tourism in the area.
I move Resolution 2025-18 be adopted.
Second.
All right. It's been moved and seconded, and we'll go back to Council President Stossberg for, to start off the presentation.
Thank you so much. So I just wanted to give a little bit of background with my involvement with regard to the stadium district. So last year, I was approached, actually, by Christopher MGE of the Chamber of Commerce, and I believe that a few other councilmembers were also approached at the time about this concept of trying to give some life and vitality into this northside area in terms of geographic nodes and identity, and the business owners in that area wanting some support and some identification around that. And so that conversation happened in July of 2024. It was on the telephone. And during that time, because there's been so much conversation in the community over the last couple of days about the named stadium district, I wanted to call out, I was the one that actually floated that name in the first place, not as a salute to IU, but as the economic reality that if we're looking at this as supporting businesses, trying to drive the economy in that area, have some identification in that area, that it is just a reality of that space, that there are these large sporting facilities right there that attract thousands of people each year to that space. And so between August and January, maybe February, I had several conversations with our ESD Department Director Cooper Smith about the concept, about some preliminary maps, about how that would help that area, benefits of creating a named district, and how that can support businesses in the area simply by having some kind of identification. And it was somewhere around the January, February time, when I took over as president, honestly, and I was very busy. And there was also this riverfront, front district piece, which is not out yet, that has to do with a much smaller area of land in that same space in terms of economic driver that is a more technical part, that I was like, hmm, that is not the technical expertise that I have, but I'm very supportive of giving this space some encouragement and life and vitality, and ways to really create some pride over there, create some identity so that it can attract folks into that area. And so at that time, though, because these two things were very intertwined, I passed it over to the ESD Department and Director Cooper Smith to kind of bring it through the rest of the way. And so at this point in the story, I'm going to pass that over to Director Cooper Smith to talk about the different things that she did to pursue this concept.
Thanks, Councilmember Stossberg, for the introduction. As she mentioned, I'm Jane Cooper Smith, the Director of Economic and Sustainable Development for the city of Bloomington, and I am really pleased to talk with you about Resolution 2518 this evening. This legislation, oh, there it is, seeks to advance quality of place in the northside area that serves as a gateway to Bloomington. This legislation does three things. It establishes a name, it establishes a geographic area, and it empowers the Department of Economic and Sustainable Development to promote that area. So we're then able to include that in our economic development efforts. It does not do other things. It does not establish an economic development incentive. It does not have a planning component or requirement. It does not require participation from anyone. It does not commit funding to the stadium district, and it does not have a cost to participate for anyone who does choose to participate. I do apologize, this map was hard to fit on the slide. So I'll describe the boundaries here for you. The boundaries of the stadium district are 13th Street on the south side to Clubhouse Drive on the north. So Clubhouse is the drive that connects Old State Road 37 and Cascades to the Cascades Golf Course. So it goes all the way up there, and then it cuts over to North Walnut Street there, scooping the area that contains Visit Bloomington. I have to find my place again. It's approximately Dunn Street on the east and Kinzer Pike, Rogers Street on the west. That's, it's actually further west than that in certain areas. So when we had GIS create the map, the desired boundary was Kinzer, and so it's all the parcels that touch that. And so the physical boundary, geographic boundary ends up going farther west, but that's how those parcels became included. Yeah. And this effort is focused on commercial activity. There is an economic development program whose, this is an economic development program whose purpose is to drive activity to the commercial parts of the district. The map includes a mix of residential and commercial areas, specifically the area between Walnut Street and Dunn Street, which is part of the Garden Hill neighborhood, is zoned for mixed-use student housing. So this is the area, you can see the blue-green squiggle going north-south. This is the area to the east of that. This area is mixed-use student housing. It's a zoning district that is intended, this is a direct quote from the UDO, "intended to accommodate a variety of housing opportunities for students in areas adjacent to or within easy walking distance of IU's campus. The district is located primarily along commercial corridors with easy access to campus serving public transit, and is most concentrated in the areas directly west, southwest, and northwest of Memorial Stadium." So even our UDO calls this area out to have, be an attraction for student housing, to drive student population into this corridor, and it calls out the stadium specifically. The initial footprint of the map was smaller, but was expanded after discussions with businesses and recommendations from businesses. And as part of the city's consideration of the Riverfront District Permit Program, which Councilmember Stossberg mentioned, that potential program will be brought to you for consideration in October. And the why. Naming a thing is a powerful action. This action in particular will strengthen Bloomington's identity as a college town. It's not the only part of our identity, but it's a key piece of what makes Bloomington who we are and why we have the resources that we do. It also highlights activity that is already happening in and around this area. With 2019 changes to the UDO, the student population has indeed been driven to the district. Any time of day, you can see people walking, dog walking, biking around an area that previously functioned as a pass-through. And again, that's the area surrounding Miller Showers Park. And while student housing development has driven the student population to this area, businesses continue to welcome a range of patrons to the neighborhood, whether for personal services, professional services, food or drink. So I think it's a really lovely balance and a diversified area for this reason. We have a mix of residents in the area, we have students, and we have businesses attracting and serving students and long-term, long-time residents of Bloomington, permanent, full-time, year-round residents. There are also a number of underdeveloped properties in the area that I believe will be positively influenced by the creation of this district. I think I skipped one of my slides. Okay, so now I'm going to tell you about the slide that we've been sitting on. Okay, the district, naming this district supports multiple goals in the city's economic development framework, establish and activate nodes of distinct identity for Bloomington's key commercial neighborhoods. This is just to say, in the past, I think we've done a really beautiful job of promoting downtown Bloomington and Kirkwood, and we've kind of expanded that along the Beeline Trail to include the Switchyard Park and areas north, including the Trades District. But Bloomington has really wonderful, diverse commercial neighborhoods to offer visitors. And so we and ESD are really trying to figure out what are the ways that we can bring businesses together in these different hubs, and the way that these business neighborhoods can kind of function in similar ways to Kirkwood. What else can we offer visitors and residents by really thinking about our identity in these areas? The second goal is to support destination tourism. This gateway area plays a critical role in one of the prime drivers of visitors to Bloomington. This gateway area plays a critical role in one of the prime drivers of visitors to Bloomington each year, athletics, specifically IU athletics. Naming this area helps differentiate this district from other parts of Bloomington, helping visitors determine their, where they should stay. And secondly, the hotels in this area, I believe, will play a critical role in the early days of the convention center. So we know that it's not realistic that the convention center host hotel will be online as the new convention center opens in 2027. And so we will have to direct visitors in and around our community and help them navigate. I think this offers a counterpoint to that area. Why are visitors so important? For Bloomington, visitors that stay with us serve the same functional economic role as a company that sells its goods to buyers outside of the community. That is, they bring outside revenue into Bloomington, supporting our businesses and paying into the food and beverage tax, which will play an increasingly important role for Bloomington as the impacts of Senate-enrolled Act I are realized. The next item is it supports small business development. Naming the district offers a shared marketing tool to the businesses located in the stadium district, and it has already fostered a sense of community and connection among participants. And then finally, we have a goal to increase and communicate about quality of place amenities. So again, naming this district makes it a thing that can be promoted and therefore communicated about. I also want to name a couple of other inputs. The Office of the Mayor is engaged in citywide branding efforts. And the initial report from the brand audit includes findings that recommend bridging the town and gown divide. So I think that covers everything on that list. And this slide is just a summary of engagement. So we, we held business stakeholder meetings in May and August. We have had some email communications with businesses. We've done direct outreach with a number of our economic development stakeholders. We have a presentation planned for the Monroe CIB in October. And we'll continue doing outreach on this topic to communicate with our, our business neighbors and our residential neighbors. So with that, I'd be happy to take any questions. Oh, sorry, I had one more slide. This is just a summary of the slide, timeline. It, it's simpler than it looks. It's basically, you may vote tonight. We're presenting it tonight. We will add to relevant mapping resources. And then effectively, businesses, when, if this is approved and when it is approved, businesses could start using this name. Anyone could start using this name. Again, no one is obligated to. In 2026, in the 2026 budget, we have proposed funding for Wayfinding Audit. And then that will happen in partnership with Visit Bloomington, and that will roll out also in tandem with the next phase of the citywide branding. So that all kind of works really well together. Okay, and with that, I'd be happy to take questions.
I think Councilmember Stossberg wanted to round out the presentation.
Yeah, I just wanted to add one thing, partly because of some community concern about this, and I received an email about this too. Like naming this district, the stadium district, does not negate other names associated with this area. So I had a constituent reach out to me saying, please don't rename Miller Showers Park. We're not renaming Miller Showers Park. It will stay Miller Showers Park. It, it does not, like the name Stadium District does not negate any of the neighborhoods that might overlap this. Like the neighborhood name is still there and is, of course, going to end up the more prominent name, especially for residential spaces, that this name is predominantly for commercial uses as opposed to any residential uses. So I just wanted to take a minute to make sure that that was clear for councilmembers and the public with regard to the name. Thank you.
All right. Councilmember Daley, you had a question?
Yeah, thank you both very much for that presentation. And actually, kind of hopping off what you were just alluding to, what, what kind of impact might this have on the residents in these neighborhoods?
Well, that's a great question, thank you. And I, I realize sometimes I bury the lead in my presentations, and I apologize for that. Why did we include the residential areas at all, I think is a good question and in line with what you're asking. Our assumption, my assumption, was that nothing would be required if residents didn't want to do anything with this label. But if there were small apartment buildings, rental units in these neighborhoods that were being marketed, those property owners could also use the stadium district name in addition to their neighborhood name. So that was kind of why it, it, it expanded to include the residential areas on both the east and the west sides of the neighborhood. So for neighborhood impact, I think it depends on what the neighbors want to do with it. If they don't want to do anything with it, they don't have to. Individuals might include it in, in something, again, if they're renting their house. I don't know what they might be doing, or if there's, you know, there's a small apartment building in Maple Heights, for example. Perhaps Olympus Properties, who I think, I think owns that, could use the label on their listing. But I don't imagine it changing Maple Heights or Garden Hill, especially in terms of your neighborhood signage and your identity, your core residential neighborhood identity remains that of your neighborhood.
So just to clarify that. So were there any, like, possible negative side effects that a neighborhood might see? Like a residential neighborhood might experience maybe more traffic or anything of those sorts that we might think about with the association?
I think that that would only happen if there were signage related to that. And the citywide wayfinding audit and branding will make really thoughtful wayfinding signs for our visitors. So we won't be slapping them in places that we don't want them to go. The purpose of the label, so when I think about how a property owner, a rental owner might use it, the purpose of the label is just to indicate that it's, it's close to this, just the stadium part of town, that you're in, you know, walking or a short ride to the athletics facilities. I think that's the primary purpose. So I don't really see a negative there. I don't really see it harming anyone, especially if they choose not to use it. A neighborhood association might meet and say, we don't want anything to do with that, and that would be fine.
Councilmember Stossberg, did you want to reply as well?
I just wanted to address the signage thing a little bit. I mean, there are restrictions in the UDO about people putting up signs. So, you know, if there is, say, a small apartment that's next to you in a residential district, which there might be in some of these zoning districts in terms of what is allowed over there, they can't just slap up a huge sign that says, now you're in the stadium district, because there are sign ordinances that, that talk about how big your signage can be and how much it can be. And you have to get approval for a certain signage. So it's, it's in terms of effects on neighbors, like, it's not like suddenly there's going to be some huge sign next door to you. No matter what is next door to you right now, they would have to go through the same process of, of any kind of signage. I envision it honestly, I think one of, one of the things that I could imagine it being used for is Airbnb's, honestly. So, you know, in those residential areas, there might be some Airbnb's that might then advertise themselves on Airbnb as part of this, this district. And then one of the other benefits, of course, once you do that, I mean, I've, I've gotten things through Airbnb too, right? Is you go like, oh, it's part of this district, and here's this restaurant guide. And if, you know, the businesses, all the restaurants there want to, want to get together and make some kind of online restaurant guide, like this is all the things that are here, and that's something that they can do. And so that's the, the piece of advantage that I really see in terms of the commercial pieces that are there. But I, I think that residentially, there would be little to know, especially like immediate impact of all of a sudden, there's this big sign next to you. I hope that answers your question.
Councilmember Rosenbarger?
Hi, thank you so much. I have an 8:00 PM that I am about to leave to, so I'm glad I get to talk right now. And I'm sorry that I have to leave early tonight, everyone. Thank you, Director Cooper Smith, so much for being here. I want to say, because I'm, I'm leaving, I, I will have a question, that generally, I think this is awesome and I support it. I have had a lot of emails from folks and constituents in District 2, because Maple Heights is a chunk of this. And I would like it if Maple Heights can be consulted in all of this. So mostly, I do need to leave early, but I would be voting no on this tonight, just because I think, like, process is very, process is very important to me. And economic development impacts streets, houses, humans, you know? And so I think that if we, I kind of relate it to if we have duplexes as a conditional use, that, you know, there are multiple meetings and neighborhood approvals for a two-unit home. I think that we should just have approvals for like where this district might be and how it impacts neighborhoods. I know that the naming is, it's a name, and I totally understand everything, just like you can use it or you cannot use it to advertise, sort of with the geography of the name of it. I know it's in relation to this, in the process for the River District. But like, in my mind, if something is called a stadium district, the stadium is in the middle. So just like, it is a ways from the stadium. So people have asked, like, what other names? You know, like, if you don't like that name, what other name? And some folks said, like, City Market, which there's not really a market there. But there is, I guess, one market, a grocery store. But also, like, Noda, right, like, north of downtown. I was just trying to put out some ideas because people were like, have an idea if there's nothing, like, I understand that. So could you discuss a little bit your perspective on resident engagement when you are doing economic development such as this?
Yes, just frankly, as the residents probably who are here this evening know, we didn't reach out to the neighborhood associations because we were seeing this primarily as a commercial district. That's, it's, the initiative is for the commercial district. And we added, we included the residential areas because, in our view, which people may or may not agree with, it was not harmful to include them because it was up to them whether they would use it in future or not. And it's so primarily focused on the commercial. So we didn't do direct outreach to the neighborhood associations.
Thank you. Councilmember Rallo?
Well, following up on that, so I'm concerned about unintended consequences. You know, it sounds benign, but suppose, so something that concerns me perennially is the conversion of single-family owner-occupied homes to rentals and Airbnb's and so forth.
Yes, well?
Yeah, so we've got about 1,000 in town and counting, and they're going up. And so could this expedite that, that conversion of owner-occupied to rentals and Airbnb's? Simply because that district is going to be known now as the stadium district? It's nearby the stadium. You market it in that way, right? So now the, you know, it's, it's very attractive then for, you know, investors to buy a home and say, we're in the stadium district, and that's, it's nearby and you can walk. So it, it, it seems to me that it's not necessarily benign, that there isn't, that there might be a harm involved in here. Do you, what, what do you think about that? Was that discussed?
We didn't discuss Airbnb's, but I think about Airbnb's and how much they harm our economy constantly. This is very heavily on my mind. And I'm familiar with the statistics, and I'm familiar with our great housing need and what we need to have by 2027, for example. So I don't, you know, Airbnb's are so popular, I guess, for lack of a better word, in Bloomington. I don't know that this name is going to worsen the current state. I don't know that it's possible to worsen the current state. Sorry, I hear laughing, but it's true.
Well, no, no, I'm not laughing at that. I'm just, you know, we're on a predicament. Yeah. It can't, it can't help it, I guess.
Yeah.
Just to follow up, how difficult would it be to exclude neighborhoods and just have the, you know, businesses or majority businesses?
Well, I think we need, I think that we need to have a contiguous district, right? So I think that if we were to remove pieces from the map, we would just want to make sure that it's not parcel by parcel, but it's, it's a section. And I don't personally think that's super difficult. It's just more time and more edits and coming back. So I, I think that it's really important for the district to go all the way down to 13th Street and, which is just north of that rail, Indiana Railroad line. I think that there are commercial property, properties on either side of College and Walnut. There are commercial properties along 17th Street that connect into Maple Heights. There are commercial properties along Dunn Street. The area east of camp, sorry, east of the College and Walnut corridor makes a lot of sense to me to be included in the stadium district, even though it has a lot of residential in it. Again, it's got commercial lining Dunn Street, and it has dense student rental, for which the UDO offers a definition that includes mention of the stadium. So I don't know, that was a meandering answer, but I don't know if it gets what you wanted.
Yeah, that gives me perspective. Thank you.
Councilmember Stossberg, did you want to address that as well?
Yeah, I just wanted to mention the other thing that, like, especially what we looked at in the beginning stages of, like, the mapping process and what, what area should there be? I was consulting our zoning map a bunch, and Director Cooper Smith referenced that a little bit. But if you look at the zoning map, you know, we have that mixed-use student district that goes all the way from the bypass down to 13th Street in this rectangle, essentially from Dunn to Walnut. And then, like, along College Walnut and down 17th, and then up to, there's a bunch of multi-use districts. And so, or mixed, sorry, mixed-use, I think they're mostly medium scale, and then some of them are neighborhood scale. And those are areas that are kind of, you know, specifically designed to have commercial in them. And Director Cooper Smith mentioned the nodes earlier in terms of commercial nodes. And there's a few other commercial nodes in different places, like Hillside and Henderson, for example, where we have a bunch of, like, commercial stuff right here in kind of this node. Now, this isn't quite a node. It's a little bit bigger than a node because the space is a little bit bigger. And there are several businesses already along both 17th and College Walnut. And then Walnut going north too, and a lot of those places are already really catering. So in terms of the Maple Heights area, which has been brought up, like, in the original map, if you look at the zoning map, the, the original proposal for this district more like mirrored that mixed-use medium scale that kind of winds through the kind of corner of that neighborhood as it goes, that transition from College to 17th Street. And I'm using my hands a lot because it's this shape. But that will only make sense if you're looking at the zoning map. And so I, I think that, that the map could potentially be, be shifted to exclude some of those areas that are zoned more specifically residential. But, you know, that, that area goes from the mixed-use medium scale to the residential urban with a little bit of, I think it's residential, maybe multifamily and maybe high density. I'm having to scroll up and figure out what color is what. And so that speaks some to, to the possibility of apartments and other builds going in there. So that was just something that, that was looked at originally in terms of that map, in terms of what made sense.
Councilmember, sorry?
Could you tell us a little bit, Director Cooper Smith, or perhaps Councilmember Stossberg, about the outcomes of some of the outreach?
Yeah, do you mean with businesses or?
Yeah, so I mean, the, if you go back to your slides, you had a list of, you know, here are the groups that we, that we reached out to.
I mean, it was really informational, and honestly, there, there wasn't, I don't, I would like to go back to that slide if we can, we'll just go through it. If that's okay. Thanks.
Sorry.
Well, anyway, so I gave a detailed presentation to DBI last Monday. The chamber has been involved from the beginning. We haven't given a formal presentation to, like, the Chamber Policy Council, but we've, they've been connected since the beginning. Visit Bloomington has been engaged since the beginning. Again, that's leadership and not that full board, BDC, staff-level communication. IU, we communicated with the previous VP Morris and the previous VP for capital planning. And I apologize, I forget the full title. And then we've shared information with VP D'Angelo and haven't had a back-and-forth exchange. But IU has been very supportive. There was a clear understanding that from the beginning, they were supportive. They didn't think it was super appropriate to be included. And then we also felt like this program was actually better when it's focused on the city property. And so that was really great. And then the CIB, again, I spoke briefly with President White Hart, and we'll be presenting to them in October.
Okay. I, yeah, because I, I, I think that there's, well, this is question time, so I won't make a comment. I have a follow-up question, but I'll, can I ask, is there, can I ask a follow-up? I have a follow-up question, but I'll, can I ask, is there, can I ask a follow-up question right now or?
Councilmember Stasburg wanted to reply to you as well.
Yeah, I also just wanted to mention that, that IU connection just, just a tad bit because in the earliest conversations, there was this idea like, do we include the IU property? And Councilmember Rosenberg alerted to, well, if it's a stadium district, don't you expect the stadium to be in the middle? But if we were thinking about it in terms of economic development and businesses and in terms of like the property that surrounds the stadiums is all IU-owned property. So businesses can't really develop there. So you're not going to have businesses that are, you know, bordering the stadium. They're all going to be off to one side because of just how the map looks and how the ownership of property looks. And so that made a whole lot more sense and IU seemed kind of agnostic either way. It didn't really matter. And so this is the result of that.
Councilmember Sari, did you have an additional question?
So just then as a follow-up, because you know, this question about anchoring to a stadium. So, so I'm confirming with the two of you that when presented to IU as a start, IU said, oh yeah, that sounds great. We really, really resonates with us to have a stadium district north of the stadium. So this is?
I mean, it's west of the stadium mostly.
Yeah, west of the stadium.
Yes.
Yes. And then, and so.
They were, they were not trying to drive the program, but they were, they were saying like, you know, it's like your friend saying, yes, I really love this for you.
Yeah, okay. And then just that question, I think, and I think you answered this to, to a member of the press who asked about the consideration of other names. Could you talk a little bit about how we arrived at stadium and, you know, because again, this is a branding exercise. And so my follow-up to that question is going to be, are we at any danger that because we're going through this branding exercise and wayfinding that at some point, the professionals that are doing the consulting for the city come and go, you know what, this should actually be called?
No, the professionals that the city's been consulting with are aware of this and have looked at our economic development framework and think that nodal commercial strategy is great. And frankly, with most of our outreach, the name Stadium District resonates very well with the people. It's practical, it's direct, it's clear. It's exactly what you want out of a branding. You know, it's a branding outcome that you want. Did we go through a full branding exercise for this specific slice of neighborhood? No, but we did consult our experts. Visit Bloomington is maybe one of the chief branding experts in Bloomington. They go through brand audits and updates on a two or three-year cycle. They look at data, they look continually at the data, both of the makeup of our visitors and the people who live here. So being able to have them be engaged in this is having marketing professionals at our side. And it was a no-brainer for them.
Councilmember Stasburg?
To, to go back again to where I started, when I had this conversation with Mr. MG in July of 2024, it was brought to me as the, the business owners in this area are interested in something. It was brought to me as like something related to the fact that there's lots of people who come here, tourists who come here to spend tourist dollars associated with going to sporting events. And so it was, it was posited to me as the Sports District. And I turned around and said Stadium District instead of Sports District because I think that we have lots of other places in Bloomington that could be considered sport districts, including a city-owned property like Twin Lakes Recreation Center and Winslow Sports Park. And so that was kind of a piece of that. And I didn't know at the time if that was going to stick through going back to the stakeholders in terms of the business owners in that area, in terms of going to economic and sustainable development as the experts in this, but it did. And so that, that was a piece of it. And it, it was named that way to recognize that in terms of economic driver in that space, it, it's the stadium. It's the sports facilities up there that bring thousands of people into the city for those sporting events. And so it's those people that are really gonna, you know, frequent those businesses and get those outside dollars in to like, to like help the rest of, you know, our, our small businesses over there. And I think also in terms of some of that housing and especially that student housing, it's not just that, you know, for some of those folks that's adjacent to IU as the university, like the place where they go to school. But I suspect that a whole bunch of those students actually really want to live there because it's right by the football stadium, right? Or the basketball or, you know, like all of that thing. Like that's, that's, you know, for certain subs of the population, like that's super desirable. Now, for me personally, I try to avoid that area on game nights because it is just very, very congested. But if I was 20, I might really be, be trying to, you know, I'd be making different decisions.
Other questions from councilmembers? Okay, seeing none, let's go to the public. If there's any member of the public who would like to comment on Resolution 2025-18, naming of the Stadium District, you can approach the podium and you'll have up to three minutes. There should be a timer that you can see. And please do sign in. I see the first person is already doing all those things, so that's great. And after a few people are in the chambers, we will check in online to see if there's anybody raising a hand there. And when you're ready, please say your name for the record and you'll have, like I said, three minutes.
Good evening. My name is Sarah Alexander and I am a resident of the Maple Heights neighborhood. The northeast half of which seems to have been included in the area of the proposed Stadium District. While I appreciate the efforts to activate the areas surrounding Miller Showers Park, I am afraid that whoever made that map doesn't seem to have any understanding of my neighborhood or perhaps Bloomington at all. The defined borders include 13th Street, which doesn't exist at all in the proposed area because of the railroad tracks. And North Kinzer Pike isn't on the western boundary, but runs sort of three quarters of the way over. Jackson is actually on the west. So perhaps I should not be surprised that the proponents of this resolution don't understand that while some businesses line the edges of the neighborhood facing out, most of it is owned residential, including my own home, which is included in the proposed area. I object to the connection of this residential area to the stadium in any way. The only result of such a connection would be the further encouragement of short-term rentals. Such properties sit empty most of the year, creating hollowed-out neighborhoods where it is impossible to foster relationships with the people with whom we should be able to build actual physical communities, which is to say nothing of how short-term rentals inflate the cost of housing. Perhaps if those who were in charge of outreach on this project had consulted with someone whose eyes weren't exclusively focused on how to magic a drainage feature into a river so that they could more cheaply get more drunk drivers onto a stroud, we could have avoided all of this. Needless to say, I request that the council vote no on this resolution. Thank you.
Okay, anybody else here in council chambers care to comment?
Hello, my name's Greg Alexander. I'm always amazed by the power of prayer. We have something inside of our heads, just an idea, and it leaps out of our heads and it changes the world. The way we think and talk about things matters. Generally, past planning documents have described this area as a gateway. And there's downside because it elevates the people that come through here over the people that live here. It's not the same thing as a neighborhood. A gateway can be a highway. There are advantages thinking of it as a gateway though, because it symbolizes a transition for that visitor. Now you're in a city, you need to be patient, you need to pay attention. The gateway should tell people you are entering my neighborhood. By comparison, Stadium District doesn't say a thing. The stadium only really exists less than a dozen days a year. I'm not alone in saying I hate it. I don't like what those few days do for my community. I don't want our planners and our business leaders to meditate on the stadium when they think about my neighborhood. I live in this district and the stadium is a problem for me, not an asset. The economic and cultural strength of this district is its thousands upon thousands of residents and it's extraordinarily insulting to say otherwise. Look at the material thing they're trying to lead up to, more liquor licenses. They're trying to make a bar district on a highway. That's villainy. That's evil. We already have an epidemic of drunk driving here. It's immoral to put a bar where people only drive. I do want to see it develop. I do want to see more bars by my house. Our problem is the College Walnut Corridor. There are already businesses within this district that I want to go to, that are not safe to walk to from my house, that I go less often because of that. We don't have a problem with names. We don't have a problem with insufficient liquor licenses. We, we have a problem with the highway that runs through our neighborhoods and restricts our commerce. We have a planning department. You guys spend millions of our dollars paying for this department. We have experts, use their expertise. No one from the planning department is here. This is a planning issue. You're designating a district and you don't have planners here? Like what the heck? You know, we deserve the benefit of their expertise. Ask them, they'll tell you, we need to do something about that highway. I'm comfortable saying that because our planning staff has already recommended a College and Walnut Corridor study, a road diet, in as many words. This body voted for that six years ago, seven years ago now, right? That plan would actually help my neighborhood. That plan would actually help these businesses. Don't just vote this down. Drag planning staff in here. Ask them what we should be doing to make this district come to life and ask them, why the hell are we passing plans that are sitting on the back burner for seven years? Thank you.
All right, next person in chambers and then we'll go to Zoom.
Thank you, Councilmember P. Monstment. This is Chris Termer-Gree from the Greater Bloomington Chamber of Commerce. I was referenced by Madam President there. It was wonderful to work with her and Ms. Cooper Smith on, on the Stadium District. And a couple of things I want to, I want to sort of bring up on this. I was on Channel 13 News sort of promoting this. They had called on a late Friday. I had two people from the community just randomly come up excited about it. One of the things they're excited about is investment in that area and what this is supposed to do, this marketing is spur that investment. I get more, more questions on what about that Colorado Steakhouse? What's going to happen there? This is a no-cost proposal. This is, this is about harnessing IU Athletics into helping the businesses along that corridor, which is what spurred this idea to begin with. It, you know, I don't know anything and cannot talk about the map itself onto that. I didn't have anything to do with that. I do have something to do with the businesses along that corridor that need this sort of marketing tool to harness IU Athletics, which is a big deal. This is also a chance for those student housing based on zoning to market their housing. If we want students away from the central corridor, this seems like it would be a good idea on that. I just, I think what, sometimes we can't see the forest from the trees in this community and I think tourism is something we have to look at. SB1 is making tax revenue very difficult. It's putting, it's going to put a strain on as the fiscal committee hopefully will go about that business and look at some very hard issues and not just salary issues, that we need to bring that revenue up. How are you going to do that? Out-of-towners and visitors is a way to do that. We want that part of the north side to be redeveloped. This is a first step in sort of doing a no-cost. It is not a seven-year plan. This is simply trying to harness that IU Athletics into something, some, something a little bit bigger, something labeling that people can understand that don't live in Bloomington. And the businesses need that there. They need this, this, we want to spur private investment in there. This is just a means to do that. Whether the boundaries move or not, I, you know, I don't have an opinion on that. But we need to start thinking about economic development and spurring that in a time that is very difficult on Bloomington. It is, this is a tough time to where, if we can get out-of-towners in here to spend their money and the multiplier effect of that, it's not just transferring money if I go to the movies or if I go to the bowling alley. Does not do anything economically. When out-of-towners come in, there's a multiplier effect on it. We've got to start thinking about that. I feel for the residents. I don't want to ruin any neighborhoods with this. Residents are what make it, but this is not what this is about right now. This is about businesses and business investments. So let's just sort of think about that as we move forward. Thanks.
All right, is there anybody who has a hand raised on Zoom who would like to comment?
Yes, we have three people.
Okay, go ahead with the first one. If you, you should be unmuted. When you get unmuted, please state your name for the record and you'll have up to three minutes.
Hello, my name is Aubrey Williams and I am one of the co-founders of Heartwork Brewing on the north side in the proposed Stadium District. I'm a proud townie and graduate of Bloomington North who came back with my family. And while I leave the map discussion up to the council and I do agree that we need better visibility of crosswalks and crossing safety in our area, and we have bike racks that we'd like to see used a bit more. I want to bring up the perspective as a small business along the corridor. One challenge any new business has is visibility and awareness. And we see an opportunity to unite the area and highlight the entry to the area to help us further enhance that north side. We and our neighbors recently cleaned up over 100 needles on just our two properties and have been trying to make some of the area less of an eyesore after many properties were vacant for a long time. I know that additional liquor licenses can be a scary thing to consider, but when the census was done, Bloomington actually didn't receive, you know, an increased quota due to the absence of the students to really match our population growth. And what we've seen in other cities is that similar districting has driven the opening of more family-friendly establishments. And the city would be able to manage who has access to any of these permits, preventing them from being student-centric bars and focused more on local businesses. For us, it would simply mean that we can sell local cider instead of just the beer that we make. We could have, somebody who's 20 years old could come in and have a pizza and, you know, sit there for trivia night. It's hard to get any new businesses, especially restaurants, to open without access to licenses that should be $1,000, but in Bloomington trade for a quarter of a million. And so family-friendly restaurants, small businesses, we don't have the access that others do to be able to afford licenses that would truly allow us to serve more of our community. You know, I've got two little kids in this community and I think that it's important to me that we're a place that proudly serves towny beer and serves our community through events and other gathering spaces the way that we like to talk about third spaces. So would love to be able to explain to people where we're located other than just saying, oh, we're north of downtown, south of the bypass. So just one small business's perspective in a very challenging economic environment where you've got that, those post-pandemic consumer trends. Thank you for your consideration.
All right, who is the next speaker on Zoom? Once you are unmuted, please state your name for the record and you'll have up to three minutes for your comments.
Hello, my name is Gabriel Holbrow. Am I heard right now? Yes. I am an employee of the city. I'm also a resident of Maple Heights, but I'm not speaking on behalf of the city or really even speaking on behalf of the Neighborhood Association. Either I'm speaking on my own behalf. I hear the perspective that the Stadium District branding won't affect the identity of the existing neighborhoods, including Maple Heights. I respectfully disagree. I think the, the proposed Stadium District boundaries, they cut through the established area of the Maple Heights neighborhood. And they even cut through the, the mapped Maple Heights Historic District. I see the map in this proposal specifically as splitting up Maple Heights and undermining the branding effort that my neighbors, unfortunately, I can't take any credit, but my neighbors have put so much effort into. Recently, some of our neighbors worked on refurbishing our sign that's on Madison just off you across the bridge from Rogers Street. There's a lot of work put into the historic district, creating it, creating district guidelines for it. That's all part of the identity of the district, the branding of the district. To identify, to, to address Councilmember Daly's question about impacts on the neighborhoods, the thing is we are, we are already experiencing the traffic and the short-term rentals. We'll be experiencing those impacts whether or not there's a Stadium District or whether or not a Stadium District branding is adopted at all. So, but those impacts are okay. It's just part of the pluses and minuses of our neighborhood. I mean, we also get to go to the great restaurants like Heartwork Brewing, so those are some of the pluses. But what I don't want to have happen is the branding efforts to weaken my neighbors' efforts to create a neighborhood identity. So specifically, my request to you, councilmembers, is to amend the map to remove the established Maple Heights neighborhood area from the map. That's what I would like to say. Thank you.
All right, we appreciate everybody's comments. Is there a third person on Zoom? Okay, when you're unmuted, please state your name for the record and you'll have up to three minutes to give your comments.
Good evening, council. This is Mike McAfee from Visit Bloomington and thanks for considering this tonight. I, I'm not going to repeat what ESD Director I, I'm not going to repeat what ESD Director Cooper Smith and Councilmember Stossberg said and the excellent comments from Aubrey Williams as well. But I do want to say, we certainly hope that you will approve this and move it forward. We look forward to supporting the efforts of our tourism and hospitality partners in the area with this, with this simple common sense marketing tool. I do think one thing that has failed to be mentioned is that this is going to be a great marketing tool for them to use during the slower times. You know, we're not worried about two weekends ago when the market was at 95% capacity during the Illinois game at $600 a night rates. We're worried about June when things are really slow and November and December and January. And this is going to be a great marketing tool for them to work together and market and, and all of us who support those efforts and also promote that can wrap our arms around that and help create some business for them during the slow times. So, so I do hope you'll approve this and move it forward and thanks for considering it.
All right. Let's go back to in-person. Are there, is there anybody else who would like to comment in-person here in the council chambers? Please come to the podium. And please state your name for the record and also sign in. And then when you start, you'll have up to three minutes.
Hi, my name is Casey Green. I am in Maple Heights and I've been there for five years now. I've been in Bloomington for 20 years. I used to live down on Grant Street, right across from the Cajun Restaurant, so I am well-versed in being right in the thick of it. It's not new to me. I love it. So, being near the stadium isn't intrinsically a drawback. Development is not a drawback. But there are two things I want to, two points I want to make about this, which is, the first one is identity. We seem to have a lot of devil speak tonight, which is both that naming is this powerful tool that is quintessential to development and bringing money in and also it's not going to change anything and not going to impact anything. And I think that's naive. Whether the district goes through Maple Heights or butts right up to the edge of my house, which has been included in Maple Heights, we are going to be impacted. We have seen for two years, things escalating and more and more negative impacts in our neighborhood. The thing that I loved about the marketing surrounding this is that it described that the strength of Bloomington and its partnership with IU is the unique character that we add to IU. And I think the best way to get economic benefit is to have it fully integrated, not partitioned off. And right now, I'm seeing a lot more movement towards trying to realign the character of Bloomington to overlap and be overwritten by IU. More IU colors, ripping out native landscapes that are more reminiscent of, you know, our Midwestern culture, naming it the Stadium District. And we're losing our uniqueness. We're losing what makes us interesting. The stadium's going to be there. People are going to live near the stadium no matter what. We don't need to call it that and make that our only point of personality, especially given the news these days where I don't believe we want to be aligning as a neighborhood with IU's headlines. We don't want to be associated with that. A lot of us don't. Second issue I want to bring up is the communication and the characterization around the neighborhoods. Being referred to as a doormat or a gateway is absolutely insulting. We aren't here as a pass-through. We're not the city's financial foyer. If the funds aren't staying here and it's clear that the businesses are funneling that out, then we're not actually benefiting. We're just providing services and losing.
All right. Thank you. Anybody else here in council chambers would like to give a comment? Is there anybody else on Zoom?
No, there is none.
Okay. We'll come back to the council then. Any council members want to follow up with a question or make a comment? Councilmember Rallo.
Yes, I, so I'm, there's a dimension here that I wasn't considering and that is, and Director Cooper Smith, could you maybe answer a question? So with this, as the speaker said, this is just a name, but it has implications that might be profound, one of which would be to allow more liquor licenses in a special designated business district? Is that, is that likely, a likely outcome?
There's a separate piece of legislation that proposes the creation of a riverfront district, which would allow the issuance of low, lower-cost licenses to locally headquartered restaurants within a narrow footprint. So I think this would not be a high volume of permits, but I think it will foster new starts for locally-owned restaurants, which we desperately need in this community. That is not being proposed tonight and it is not related to this map.
So it would require that legislation?
That, yes, that legislation will, would be an ordinance. It would have two hearings and again, public outreach will happen. That is technically slated for October 22nd at this time. And that will get a full, full fleshing out, which I would welcome.
Okay. Council President Stossberg?
Yeah, that's kind of the piece that I was referring to earlier, that like when, when that started getting like paired conceptually with naming a district, I was like, ooh, okay, like that is over my head and I'm like, I, I don't want to say I don't support it right now because I've like seen it and I think that the safeguards that are in place around making sure that, somebody mentioned bars earlier. Bars would not qualify for this. So, you know, we don't want this area to turn into another bar zone or drunken, you know, spaces. So, so it is very different. But, but that was a point where I was like, okay, that, that is kind of above my pay grade in terms of those details. Those details are there. They're not quite ready. They're, they're, as I said, a little bit more complex in terms of making sure that they get vetted all the way. And so right now, it's tentatively scheduled for a first reading on the 22nd and then a second reading on the 5th. But I also, I think that that's still in flux because the attorneys are still looking at the details of that and wanting to make sure that that program is set up in a way that is going to work and do what we want it to do and not do what some of the commentators tonight have alluded to being uncomfortable with or nervous of and would be really not desirable outcomes.
I have one other, but I'm.
Councilmember Asari?
Thank you. First, I'd like to note that we have a little bit of a structural problem with the sort of, with the proceeding today, namely, one is that the council member who represents what now would be this district is no longer here. They said that they were going to vote no and I'm the only at-large member right now. I do think that we have some, it's really important to make that distinction that Councilmember Rallo made, which namely is that there's two different things that we're discussing. Some of the comments were actually about the legislation that is going to be put forth and it's important not to sort of conflate the two because the one is the sort of tool that we have. This other one is about branding and marketing. So with that in mind, I, I'm really quite interested and I guess I can also comment because my time's on. I mean, I'm quite supportive of the latter thing. I have a little bit of, of an issue with the, with the current thing on our, on our agenda, namely because of the seeming disconnect between in sort of the engagement efforts and outcomes of those engagements, right? And particularly who we're engaging with and who's doing that engaging, I think also to an extent matters a little bit here because right now, what I've heard from, from a lot of residents is that they're, they're not quite happy with the way that the map looks. They're confused about what this name means, you know, all those type of things. And then we're calling this a branding exercise, sort of gets off on the wrong foot. And so I'm kind of interested in to what extent we'd be amenable to changing the map and, and yeah, so and what that process would look like.
Absolutely. You know, this, this should be in my mind, in, should be a big win for the community that feels mostly good. And so the fact that there's a neighborhood that I used to live in, by the way, and loved very much and then spent 13 years in a neighborhood adjacent to, you know, that they feel marginalized and not supported by this is not great. And, and editing the map, conversely, editing the map is something that's really manageable to do and I think this conversation helps, you know, it helps me see that in our language, we're centering the commercial activities. And so, even though I understand why we expanded the footprint to include these residential areas, the map should also probably be narrowed to focus more deliberately on the commercial areas. That's what this is about.
Right. Exactly. And so that, so, so thank you for answering that. And so by, by way of my comment, I think what I would, unless we feel that it's something we can amend today, with all of that in mind, I really think that we should postpone it only so that, one, so we can tie it more carefully to the, to the tool legislation that's coming forward, which I think is super important and something we need to be discussing. And, and that was sort of the gist of this conversation. Secondly, so that we can ensure proper representation of this district. It's why we have districts, so it just feels, you know, if the people of the district are particularly, you know, concerned about it, I think that it's important that the, that their representative or, you know, at least more of their at-large representatives be here. But I think that we should have some discussions just around sort of the, you know, where, where this district is so that we get a lot of support for it. So if we were voting today, I'd have to vote no, but I would like to move this forward because I do see it as an important piece of the legislation that's coming again later. So I would just, my, my sort of recommendation to the council is that we postpone this to sort of fix this a little bit more carefully with the separate legislation so we can talk about those in unison. Thank you.
Councilmember Stossberg, did you want to respond to that question or comment?
Yeah, I also.
I guess we're on comments, so.
Yeah, we kind of are. I think there, yeah. I also, earlier tonight, I think that I alluded a couple of times to the zoning map and earlier today, actually, in one of the email communications in response to constituent, I was like, I'm not actually sure. Actually, it wasn't in response to a constituent, but it was about another constituent comment. Not actually sure how the map got expanded into more of that residential area in Maple Heights as opposed to kind of staying on that border that was the, the multi-use area. And so I think that Director Cooper Smith addressed her reasoning in that tonight and I support the concept of that reasoning, but I also think that the residents who live there, that it makes them really uneasy and I think that, that they have a point. And it's kind of like, well, is it really necessary to include that, that residential space? And I don't think it is. So to that like, and I also support changing the map and so I would move that we postpone consideration of this until our next regular session on October 22nd.
Second.
Okay. Does, does this motion, is there discussion allowed with a motion to postpone?
Yes.
Well, I would like to take an opportunity to, to make a few comments. I, I'm in favor of the motion to postpone. I, in addition to what my colleagues have said as far as, you know, listening to the neighbors in Maple Heights, I want to call up also what, what I think one or maybe two residents stated in particular, which was the lack of safety along the Walnut and College Avenue corridor and the fact that we have for many years put in our plans that we're going to do something about it and it's been studied and, and it was put on hold and now I don't know what's, you know, we keep putting it off, it seems like, that something that I thought during this meeting tonight is that maybe we should wait with this whole thing until after we actually see some movement in making that corridor more safe. So obviously that won't happen before October 22nd, but, but that's something I'm thinking of. So I'm in favor of the motion. Are there other council comments? Yes, Councilmember Asari.
On the motion, I would, I would motion that we amend it rather, I, I guess it's a question to us to deliberate, but I wonder if it makes more sense to have it on the day when we would do the second reading of the legislation around the Riverfront District so that they're, so that they're clearly paired. But, you know, I, my, when I made this just in original, when I made this just in originally, my first thought was, okay, give us time to amend it. I think this accomplishes that, but I just wonder if there would be some value in sort of pairing those clearly, because especially because we've had some comments today where they're conflating both of those so we can have a clear, you know, this is what we're talking about and this is what we're talking about and sort of how they overlap, I think also helps with the branding of this part for, for that matter.
Can I make a statement or can you? I just want to be really clear. I think I appreciate what you're saying, that you want to have the second reading of the potential stadium, Riverfront District legislation follow, this would be potentially voted on and considered first and then that. I want to make it very clear, I have heard a couple of times that these are related and they are and they are not. The marketing efforts from the naming are super important and are not dependent on the outcomes of the liquor license Riverfront District program. And I think for that reason, we, we ended up deciding to separate them in this way because we really wanted you to consider just the name. So I, I'm sorry, I'll be quiet after this.
Councilmember Stoss, sorry. Did you want to respond to that?
Yeah, I just want to second that, that we were really specific and deliberate about separating those things. And I think it actually sometimes makes it, makes it worse in terms of conflation of things when they're sitting right next to each other as opposed to when they're like, they're two separate things. And these are really two separate things. And as I said earlier, like, I mean, I've, I've no qualms about this. I mean, I put my name on it because I have no qualms about naming a place. But I do, you know, like the, the requirements, et cetera, you know, I mean, it's really important on the other one, there's more details, it's, you know, and I'm not even, after talking with the attorneys this week, I'm not even sure that that's going to have a first reading on the 22nd right now in terms of some specific due diligence that needs to happen with that. And so postponing this, I think after the 22nd, I don't even know if we could do that in terms of, because I think we have to postpone to the next regular session.
Okay. Okay. Yeah, I would just, just, just say as a, as a thought to that, that, I mean, I, I totally appreciate that, that view and I think, I think it's a, it's a fair one. I, I personally hold the view that, that I like them being connected. I just, I like people viewing that they, they are two different tools in a toolkit trying to achieve a broader overarching goal that is related. And so, you know, I, I don't view the sort of marketing of this with creating and operating, and again, I don't want to like get into the details of this thing that's not, you know, currently in front of us. But, but, but I just think like, you know, this does go to the broader conversations that we're having around, it's like, you know, I think sometimes for the general public, we as a council, because what happens behind the scene is opaque, right? Until it's in front of people. So sometimes it seems like we do things in this sort of like, we did this, then we did this, and then we did this. And, you know, again, just speaking as a person who, you know, does a lot of listening sessions, but, and so I, I think that it would be really, really wise of us to sort of, you know, think about this in a way where you actually can manage the way that it's communicated, you know, in, in a way so it's just not sort of scattershot, at least from the perspective of, of, of our residents. So, because there is a lot of thought that's gone into this and a lot of work that's gone into this and I just think that, you know, we do ourselves a disservice when, when the way that we debate it sometimes doesn't reflect that. So, so yeah, so that, but, but I am not opposed if we, if we continue with the motion as is, I will stop talking and I will, I will vote yes on it.
Other comments on the motion? Councilmember Rallo?
I'm in favor of postponement. I think my concerns about encouraging rentals and Airbnbs was substantiated by the, expressed by residents. So if a revised map could be available, if it could be amended in some way and, you know, maybe a meeting offer to the residents so that they can express their views on that. Other than that, I think, you know, as a wayfinder or something, I suppose that this has some utility and could be helpful. And I'm happy that the discussion about liquor license is a separate matter because I have a lot of concerns about, about that, especially related to what my colleague, Councilmember Piedmont Smith, said about the safety of that area and so forth. So, thank you.
Any other council member comments before we vote on the motion to postpone? All right. Clerk Balding, will you please?
All right. Clerk Balding, will you please call the roll on the motion to postpone to October 22?
Councilmember Piedmont Smith?
Yes.
Stossberg?
Yes.
Daley?
Yes.
Zulik?
Yes.
Rosen, uh, no, Asari?
Yes.
Rallo?
Yes.
Thank you.
That motion passes 6-0. I'll hand the gavel back to President Stossberg for the next item.
Thank you. Next, next item.
I move that appropriation ordinance 2025-08 be introduced and read by the clerk by title and synopsis only.
Thank you. It's been moved and seconded to introduce appropriation ordinance 2025-08. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed. Thank you. Will the clerk please read?
Yes, appropriation ordinance 2025-08 to transfer funds from the general fund to the fiber connectivity fund and specially appropriate funds not otherwise budgeted. The synopsis is as follows. Appropriation ordinance 2025-08 transfers funding from the general fund to the fiber connectivity fund and appropriates that funding for the ITS department per the city's master developer agreement with Meridium Hoosier Networks and Street Fiber.
I move appropriation ordinance 2025-08 be adopted.
Thank you. Looks like we have Controller McClellan here to present. Please introduce yourself for the record and go ahead.
Good evening, council. Controller McClellan to ask for your consideration of this appropriation ordinance. It transfers $250,000 from the general fund, from the cash balance of the general fund, to our new fund, the fiber connectivity fund. And then it creates a budget of $250,000 for the ITS department to use to pay the, to pay that, those portion of the drop costs that we, that we agreed to pay in the 2022 Meridium agreement. This is to fund connection to the high-speed fiber network to low-income housing.
Oh, thank you. Do council members have any questions about this appropriation? I see none. So let's go ahead and move to public comment regarding appropriation ordinance 2025-08. If you are a member of the public who would like to make a comment on this appropriation ordinance and you're in chambers, please go ahead and make your way to the podium, and you'll have up to three minutes. If you're online, please go ahead and raise your hand using the reactions tab or send a chat message to the host. I don't see anybody moving in chambers. Is there anybody who's raised their hand online? Okay. That brings us back to council again for any council member comments or questions, if anybody has thought of any. Councilmember Asari?
Quick comment for the general public who might be watching and maybe didn't watch our last meeting, but this is, you know, we're just making a transfer to a fund that we established and debated at length at, at the last meeting that clearly specified how this money can be spent. So this is just a necessary action so that we can enact our plans from before.
If you hadn't made that comment, then I was going to make that comment. So thanks for doing that, so I didn't have to. Any other council member comments regarding appropriation ordinance 2025-08? All right, seeing none. Will the clerk please call the roll on the appropriation ordinance?
Yes.
Daley?
Yes.
Zulik?
Yes.
Asari?
Yes.
Rallo?
Yes.
Piedmont Smith?
Yes.
Thank you. And that passes unanimously 6-0.
I move that ordinance 2025-35 be introduced and read by the clerk by-
No, we're on D. Appropriation ordinance 2025-09.
I thought I just accidentally crossed it off. Thank you.
No, you did 08 before.
Yep. Okay. It's been a long night, folks. I apologize. I move that appropriation ordinance 2025-09 be introduced and read by the clerk by title and synopsis only.
Second. It's been moved and seconded for appropriation ordinance 2025-09. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Thank you. Will the clerk please read?
Appropriation ordinance 2025-09 to specially appropriate from the general fund expenditures not otherwise appropriated. The synopsis is as follows. Appropriation ordinance 2025-09 additionally appropriates funding from the general fund for expenses in the ITS department, for expenses in the engineering department that have been reimbursed by Indiana University, and to approve a transfer between categories in the clerk's office budget.
Appropriation ordinance 2025-09 be adopted.
And we have Controller McClellan again.
Good evening, council. Long time no see. I'm back to ask for your consideration of three, three adjustments to the budget that we grouped together in one ordinance. The first one is for the clerk's office. It is just simply a transfer with zero effect on the general fund cash balance from, I believe it's from, other services and charges to supplies. The second one is an additional appropriation for the ITS department where the 2025 budget that we developed last year just isn't real, wasn't realistic now. It's missing some things that were absolutely necessary for applications, such as adding users and for some infrastructure that was needed in some offices that got remodeled and some offices that opened up over in Showers West temporarily. And then the fourth, or the third item for engineering is kind of interesting. That really has, that's part of an agreement with IU, where IU paid us, the city, the $17,685 for part of a project. So we received that as revenue, but it, this is just housekeeping. In order to kind of expense that project against that revenue, we need to add it to their budget. So that is truly also just housekeeping. And Rick Dietz, the ITS director, is also here. Sorry to put you on the hot spot, Rick, but if you want any more detailed questions about the ITS budget, I'm sure he'd be happy to answer those, too.
Around this appropriation. Councilmember Piedmont Smith?
Yes, this is about the ITS request. So in the memo, it says that some of the additional funds requested are due to federal funds not being available, federal funds that we expected not being available. Because, did you put a dollar figure to that?
Yeah, that, that item is referring to a service that we take advantage of that provides us with timely notifications about cybersecurity vulnerabilities. That was provided by an organization, CISA, which is the Cybersecurity and Information Security Agency, which stopped funding that service, which it provided to local governments across the, across the United States. We then decided to take advantage of subscribing to that service, which was provided jointly by the government through a private entity. And so now we're continuing that service, but there's around a $5,000 cost for that subscription on an annual basis. And actually, you know, by signing up early for that, it's, it's reduced compared to what it would otherwise be.
And then there was also a grant that was offered and then rescinded. Is that right?
Yes, that, that's an entirely separate issue, but we were announced to receive a, a large digital opportunity grant at the beginning of the year, and then that was rescinded.
How much was that?
The federal administration. That was almost $12 million.
Wow. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there other council member questions?
I have another one.
Okay, I, I have one. It says in the memo that it's the IU infrastructure costs, including hardware supporting our storage and computing presence at the IU data center. Can you tell us more about our computing presence at the IU data center?
Yeah. We have a node in our virtual private network at the IU data center. It is the most secure and robust data center that is available to us, you know, within, you know, at least until you get to Indianapolis. So we've taken advantage and partnered with IU to host some of our infrastructure there.
Great, thank you. Other questions? Councilmember Asari?
Thank you so much, Director Dietz. Super quick one, and maybe for, for both of you. The, some of the, some of the costs were recurring cost, operating cost. And so any, any reflections on the 2026 budget? Because, I mean, were, do we miss, I get the grant and all those things, but were some of these just mis, mis, misaccounted for? Like, did we not budget enough?
Some of the, some of those are increases that we needed to make. For instance, I'm just going to, you know, pick, pick one. DocuSign licenses for signing contracts. You know, we increased that earlier in the year in discussion with the legal department and kind of mapping out what we needed on an enterprise basis. We went ahead and moved forward with that for operational reasons, and that number is incorporated in our current budget proposal for 2026. So there's not, not an adjustment.
Okay, okay. So, 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 so no, that, we don't see any sort of like structural issue moving forward that might create, you know, similar out, you know?
No, no. Yeah, we, that is baked into our 20, you know, for items like that is baked into our 2026 proposal.
Awesome, thank you.
Councilmember Piedmont Smith?
Yes, again for Mr. Dietz. In the memo, it also talks about a need for funds to repair conduit/fiber for a segment supporting the Fourth Street garage that was damaged during Convention Center construction site preparation. So are we getting any money back from food and beverage tax money to cover that?
Not, not in this instance. It was infrastructure that was damaged that did not have line locate wire through it. So technically is not the fault of the, of the vendor. And so, you know, we needed to repair that to support our facilities and, and working staff at the Fourth Street garage, the garage and the, the, the parking enforcement group that is there.
So it was somehow that line was not properly marked, and so it's not the fault of the construction or demolition company?
That's correct.
Okay. Do we, was a lesson learned here? Are, are other lines in that area going to be marked so that?
Yeah, by, by and large, our infrastructure is, is properly marked. My understanding of this is we actually had two conduits, not immediately beside each other, but a number of feet apart. One of those had line locate wire, the other did not. It was the one that did not, unfortunately, that had, that had our fiber in it.
Okay. All right, thank you.
All right, let's go ahead and go to the public regarding appropriation ordinance 2025-09. If you're a member of the public who would like to comment on this piece of legislation, if you're in chambers, you can go ahead and make your way to the podium, and you'll have up to three minutes. If you're online, you can go ahead and raise your hand using the reactions tab or send a chat message to the host. I don't see anybody moving in chambers. Is there anybody online who's raised their hand? Okay, still seeing no one. Let's go back to council for any council member comments related to appropriation ordinance 2025-09. All right, seeing no comments, I will go ahead and make a comment. Two things. First of all, I appreciate Councilmember Piedmont Smith for highlighting through questions that federal money that is no longer being, being used to support cybersecurity for local governments. And I'm really pleased that here in Bloomington, we can manage to appropriate additional funds so that we can still have robust cybersecurity. But I just want to highlight that as kind of a continued problem. Last year, Monroe County government had a cybersecurity incident over the summer, IU did. And cybersecurity threats are very real, and they're impactful. And it's really, really frustrating to me that our federal government has decided to not support, to not support municipal governments in cybersecurity efforts. That's very frustrating. And the second thing I want to highlight with my comments, we did not talk about the very small appropriation to the office of the city clerk, because I already knew what that was about. But I do want to highlight that our council office moved over to West Showers in order for all of our staff to be co-loaded, co-located in the same place. And as a result of that, our staff has spent personal money, personal money to outfit that office as opposed to asking for an additional appropriation. And maybe that goes back to something else. Councilmember Piedmont Smith said earlier that we're just loathe to support ourselves. But I think that it is ridiculous that our council staff was not supported through additional furnishings and related to that move. And I think that that is just a failing, that over the summer, when that all was happening, it was like, oh, there's just no money for that. Oh, there's just no money for that. And maybe we should have spent the money then and asked for it later, which is what happened with the office of the clerk, instead of asking for it first and then spending it. And that's really frustrating to me. I, I don't think that we should spend money first and ask later as a matter of course. But I also think that it's just really, really frustrating that ourselves and our staff end up going without or spending their own money. And I think that that is a systematic problem. So that is my comment. Are there other council member comments? Thank you. Will the clerk please call the roll on appropriation ordinance 2025-09? I think that I have to go on recess right now because we no longer have a member of the clerk's office monitoring this meeting. So we'll recess for, we'll start with five minutes and come back at 9:03. Thank you. All right. I'm going to call us back to session here. If we could stop our side conversations. I know this is a long meeting. At 9:03, we are back to session. We were about to call the roll on appropriation ordinance 2025-09. Will the clerk please do that?
Yes.
Zulik?
Yes.
Asari?
Yes.
Rallo?
Yes.
Piedmont Smith?
Yes.
And Hopi Stossberg?
Yes.
All right, and that passes unanimously on to the next.
I move that ordinance 2025-35 be introduced and read by the clerk by title and synopsis only. Second.
It's been, uh, motioned and, and seconded to introduce ordinance 2025-35. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Thank you. Will the clerk please read?
Ordinance 2025-35 to amend Title IX of the Bloomington Municipal Code entitled Water. The synopsis is as follows. This ordinance amends the rates and charges in Title IX of the Bloomington Municipal Code entitled Water to reflect increased costs of supplying water and services to customers and to make debt service payments on bond financing for required capital improvements.
Thank you.
I move ordinance 2025-35 be adopted.
Second.
It's the race to second. Thank you very much. It looks like our Director of Utilities is here. You've had a, you've had a long meeting to wait and prepare. Go ahead and introduce yourself for the record, and I look forward to this.
Good evening, council. Catherine Zager, Utilities Director. I'm pleased to discuss ordinance 2025-35 to amend Title IX of the Bloomington Municipal Code entitled Water. We will be presenting a presentation on our proposed rate increases for our water utility. This will be in three parts. First, we will have our revenue requirements by Jennifer Wilson from Crow. We will then have a presentation from our consultants at StanTech, Danica and Andy. And they will be presenting our cost of service study, which we based our rates upon. And then last, I will present some additional information I think the council would like to have, including our capital improvement plan. to have, including our capital improvement plan. With that, Jennifer Wilson from Crowe.
Very good, thanks, Kat. If you could advance this slide. Oh, sorry. I can advance this slide. Is there somewhere I'm supposed to press? Going the wrong? Yeah, okay, there we go. All right, very good. I'm Jennifer Wilson with Crowe, and we prepared, as Kat said, the revenue requirement report. So I'll just go through this and tell you, when we prepared the report, we take a look at the, the past three years, the 2022 through 2024. And then we use 2024 as the test year and make fixed known and measurable adjustments to it, which then we come up with your revenue requirements, which include your operation and maintenance, or debt and lease payments, and your extensions and replacements. The key considerations of this rate increase is that you have an $84 million capital improvement plan, and we're trying to fund $54 million of it with bond issuances. Those bond issuance will include the water treatment plant projects, the water distribution system, and an annual water main replacement projects, and the water portion of the new service center. You'll also be funding some capital improvement projects with your revenues on an annual basis. And those include the, the other ones listed there. But it's going to be approximately $7.1 million per year that's going to be funded from the revenues as they come in each year. What we show here is your income statement over the past three years to show you on the blue line being your operating revenues and the yellow line being your expenses. In 2022, you had $20 million of revenues and $18.1 million of expenses. Then you can see in 2023, you had $20.2 million of revenues. And then in 2023, you also paid for quite a bit of your pilot and shared services from the utilities to the city, and they had accrued after a three-year time period. So that's why the expenses in 2023 is higher than both 2022 and 2024. And then in 2024, it's not showing the shared services and the pilot. So again, the revenues are greater than the expenses. That is all to say that in 2022, you had about $1.9 million to expend on capital projects. It went negative by $1.9 million in 2023. And then in 2024, there's $3.7 million. So much lower than the expected or the amount that we would want on an ongoing basis of $7.1 million. We took that 2024 test year and we made adjustments to it of approximately $3.2 million to increase the operating expenses to your typical average year. And that includes the shared services and the pilot expenses. We also increased the salaries and wages for the wage increases that happened here in 2025. And we also made some other adjustments to normalize the test year. I always like showing a pie graph of your operating expenses so you can see that your employee costs are approximately 42% of your operating expenses. And then the other ones are purchased power and other miscellaneouss, and materials and supplies that round out large bulk of those pie pieces. There's an $84 million capital improvement plan. As I said, you're trying to fund $54 million of it through two bond issuances, one being in 2026 and the other one being in 2028. And then the $7.1 million annually to come up with the $28.4 million that will be funded of the projects from revenues as you get them over the next four or five years. Your current debt service is $7.1 million. And you can see there, then in 2029, it goes down to 1.7. So we've been strategic in the way that we're trying to fund your capital improvements by, we're going to issue debt in 2026 and 2028. And during that time period, we're going to fund the interest during that time period with proceeds from the bonds. And then in 2029, we are going back up to debt service of $7.1 million. So overall, after these debts are issued, we'll continue that $7.1 million of annual debt service that you currently are experiencing, and we'll continue it and fill it so that you can do so much, you can do $54 million worth of projects. That brings me to the overall, sorry, yes. Yeah. It was, I, I should have made a better bar graph because it's, I, I looked at that afterwards. I didn't like how it declined. It's really that yellow should have gone all the way over straight to 2029 and then go down to 1.7. So it wasn't declining during that year. So it's, it's $7.1 million. And, yes, that's 2029. Yes. Yep. So it should have been 7.1 million until 2028 and then down to 1.7. So, yeah, I noticed that myself, yeah. All right, total revenue requirements is $29.1 million. And you're currently bringing in 22.6, so that's a deficit of $6.5 million. That means you would need an overall revenue increase of 30.5%, 30.5%. But that doesn't necessarily mean each, each customer will see that increase of 30.5% because the person speaking next is StanTech, and they've done a cost of service study in which they'll explain how this overall revenue increase of 30.5% will affect each customer class. Do you have any questions for me? Or I'll hand it over to StanTech and they continue the presentation.
Usually we do questions at the end about all of it. So if we could finish the presentation first, that would be great.
Great, thank you. Good evening, everyone. Danica Katz from StanTech. We also have Andy Burnham here as well from StanTech. Kat, are you going to be sharing the slides from the chambers or shall I present those on my end?
I have them in the chambers. I can advance the slides for you.
Perfect, thank you so much. All right. Are those all pulled up and ready to go?
Yes, we're all set.
Okay, sorry, I can't see them on my end. There we go, awesome, thank you so much. So thank you for the opportunity to present today. StanTech is going to be speaking to the cost allocation and rate design portion of this analysis, and I'll kind of step through each of those components. Before we get into the cost allocation and rate design itself, I want to start by highlighting the test year and some of the analysis that was done on this front. So in order to review the test year, we looked at historical rainfall trends to ensure that 2024, as Jennifer spoke to, for the test year was a representative year when it comes to rainfall patterns. You'll see on the next slide, we also confirmed that build consumption, so build monthly water usage by each year for each of the months was a representative test year for the system. And so we went through this analysis on many different fronts, on a monthly basis as well as here on a customer class basis. Ultimately, just to confirm, like I mentioned, that that is truly a representative year for the system. Additionally, one of the other elements that has come into this study is the AMI data, which provides a very data-driven component to the study. So it allowed us to look at the daily AMI data by every single class, which you could see here on this graphic, which represents some of those peaks and just how the system operates on a customer class basis, which on the next slide, you'll see we also have that on an hourly basis as well. So not only did we have that daily data, but we also had, you could see there at the bottom, 233 million data points. So very accurate representation of how each of these customers act on a daily and an hourly basis. And so with all of that data, what we had done is pulled together a summary of the peaking factor comparison for a max day basis as well as a peak hour basis for each of those individual customer classes. So you could see in the columns, it highlights the prior rate case peaking factors, the current revenue classes, and then you'll see there is a recommendation for consolidated revenue class there, which ultimately just combines the commercial and industrial class together. And I can go into a little bit more detail on that, but just from a high level, those customer classes behave very similar, and there's a very small amount of customers in that industrial class. And so moving on to the cost allocation and that analysis itself, just from a high level, the objective of a cost of service analysis is we essentially take the annual revenue requirements that Jennifer just spoke to, and we utilize those as our total cost of service. And we go through a process where we allocate each of the specific revenue requirement line items per the AWWA manual and through industry guidance, ultimately to determine that cost to serve for each of the customer classes compared to the current revenue that they are collecting. And so the goal is to, you know, make them consistent with the cost of providing service for each of those classes. And so how we do that is through a four-step approach. And so step one is ultimately to take those revenue requirements that Jennifer spoke to, and we functionalize those into various functions that are specific to your system. You'd see the listing there of those various functions. In step three, we then take all of those functions and we allocate them to specific demand characteristics. So that would include your average day, your max day, max hour, and then the customer component. And ultimately, in step four, we then distribute all of those costs to the respective customer classes that you could see listed there. So that's the high-level process that we, we go through. I'll just touch on this quickly because Jennifer just went through this a little bit, but this is the revenue requirement. So it just shows kind of the components that make up that $29.1 million overall revenue requirement. And so in step two, as I mentioned, we take all those revenue requirements and we functionalize those based on how they operate within your system or within the City of Bloomington system. A majority of these functions or departments within the system line items are allocated on a direct basis. When I say direct, it means, you know, source of supply is directly allocated 100% to source of supply function. But there are a handful that are allocated on some different basis, whether that be the capital improvement plan, you know, fixed asset listing and things of that nature. And then step two, this is just a summary here of all of that $29.1 million of revenue requirements allocated to those different buckets or different functions. So just as a couple examples, you could see treatment and pumping is about 10.1 million or about 35%. Distribution mains about 11% and so forth for some of the other customer and other functions. In the third step here, we then allocate all of those functionalized costs to the specific demand parameters. And so you can see there are certain functions that get allocated specifically to average day, max day, max hour, some directly to fire protection, and then a handful there on the right to customer and meter size cost. And so this just shows essentially what you saw on that prior slide, but the actual percentages that are allocated. So you can see how each of those specific functions are allocated on a percentage basis across all of those demand characteristics. These are all derived from production data that's provided by CBU and ultimately to get to those percentages that you see there on the screen. This is essentially a summary of those two prior slides that you saw, so taking the percentage and the buckets of the costs. And this is just a summary of that $29.1 million of revenue requirements by those different functions and by the different demand parameters across those columns. As part of the analysis, we also looked at fire protection and fire flow. So we were provided a specific city fire department calls of service, demands, things of that nature, so that we could ultimately get to the capacity analysis for fire flow specifically here. We also looked at the shared, the cost split between public and private fire. So we are provided the number of hydrants, both private as well as public, ultimately to get to that percent split there over there on the right. And then moving along to step four, just wanted to highlight here the units of service or ultimately how those unit costs get spread across the customer classes. And so you can see all of those units specific for each of those customer classes. I will highlight that general service now includes that commercial industrial that you saw on one of the beginning slides there. And then ultimately in step four here, the goal is to get to the cost of service summary. And so that bar in orange is the existing revenue that's collected by each of those various customer classes. And in blue is the cost to serve each of those or the cost of service findings with that 30.5% overall increase that Jennifer highlighted in her presentation, along with the percentage increases that you see there down below in the gray highlighted area. I will note that these are unadjusted and do not include any caps or limitations on specific customer classes, which we will speak to here in some of the upcoming slides. That summarizes the cost of service. And then we also did a portion of analysis on the rate design or rate calculation. And so I just wanted to highlight here the current monthly water fix and usage charges for Bloomington. So there is a fixed charge that increases by meter size from $6.50 up to that $395, as well as a usage charge or a volumetric rate per thousand gallons for each of those different customer classes there on the right. Also wanted to highlight the current monthly fire protection rates. So you have both a public fire protection as well as a private fire protection for private fire lines. Those also increase by meter size or are charged by meter size for both inside and outside city customers, as well as based on connection size for the private meter there on the right. I'll speak quickly just here, the fixed charge component or that scaled meter size component, there are four pieces that make that up. So there is a customer service related to the cost of service accounts, meters, so anything that's related to the maintenance of meters specifically, services, so anything related to service drops, and then a component for billing and collection cost. So those are all what make up the fixed charge. And on the next slide here, we're going to talk about the costs for each of those. So in developing the fixed charge, we take all of those costs that are, come out of the cost of service that I just touched on, and some of those are scaled and some of them are flat. So billing and customer services are flat across all customer class, sorry, across all meter sizes, whereas meters and services are scaled based on capacity or meter size. And down below in that table is essentially the unit cost to derive the flat and scaled portion. And so what you can see here is that in order to calculate the updated fixed charge And so what you can see here is that in order to calculate the updated fixed charge for water, you could see that flat component is the same across all meter sizes. And then the scaled component essentially scales based on a factor as the meter size increases, and those ultimately get added together to become the total fixed charge there you see in bold. And then we've also compared that on the right to the current fixed charge. Okay, moving on to the public fire protection, so very similar to what we just talked about on the regular retail side. We take the public and private fire protection cost that came out of the cost of service, and we ultimately at that bottom down there calculate a unit cost for both inside and And then we scale those just as we did on the other rates that I just talked about by meter size and compare those to the current charge. So you can see that those are all decreasing from varying percentages on the inside and outside city based on the cost of service findings. Okay, and then again, very similar here on the private fire protection rate development. So we also take the cost of service for private and billing associated with private fire and calculate a unit cost there. And then similarly, we scale that monthly component and keep that billing component flat and compare that to the current there on the right for a increase of anywhere from 11% to 43% depending on the meter connection size. All right. I know there's a lot going on here, but just I'll kind of point out the big takeaways here. So this just shows the calculated revenue for the fixed and volumetric side, ultimately making up that total cost of service revenue across all of those customer classes, as well as their billable unit. But one of the things we did want to highlight there, you could see it in the bottom in orange, is the capped at four times. So we are proposing or recommending a cap at no more than four times the identified overall rate increase of 30.5 that Jennifer discussed. And so that would be that 122% that you see there on the volumetric rate side. And then this is the same graphic that I showed before, but just with that cap, that four times cap on irrigation. And so you could see that 110% kind of dropped down a little bit from that prior slide that I showed, but still collecting that 30.5% overall increase. And so with all of that, we've got some summary tables here that just highlight, again, these were on some prior slides, but just wanted to summarize it in a clean way here and show the current rates versus the proposed. So you can see those on the, for the fixed charge on the left and then for the usage charge on the right. And then same for public as well as private. And then we also wanted to highlight just a couple of quick bill impacts to show some of the summarization for what those impacts might mean for different customer classes. So we have a couple of different here for some various customer classes. So the first one would be a residential at that smallest 5/8 meter at a handful of different usages there, varying anywhere from 0 to 5,000 and then in 5,000 increments all the way up to 50,000 gallons. And this is the total current bill and proposed bill, which includes both the fixed and the usage component. So you can see on those smaller usages, if we just look at that 5,000, it would be a $6.06 change on a monthly basis for around a 19.8% increase. And then, you know, goes up there a little bit as we get higher into the higher usages, but a majority of the residential customers at that 5/8 are typically on the lower side of the usage here. And these also do include fire protection, sorry, public fire protection, just wanted to mention that. Okay, we showed one here for the general service or what was prior commercial and industrial. So we showed two different meter sizes here, a smaller 3/4 inch and then a 1-inch meter. So for the 3/4 inch, we show a small user, medium user, and a large user. And so you can see that total and current bill there or a change of $3.38 on a monthly basis, up to $22.44 for a larger user on that 3/4 inch meter. And then on the 1-inch down below, anywhere from $32.85 for that smaller meter up to $54 on that larger meter. Quickly touch on the wholesale here. So we just pulled a 4-inch meter, larger meter, at some higher usages for the wholesale customers and showed some of those current and total bills for some increases anywhere from 38% up until, you know, around 48 for some of those higher users. Just highlight quickly here again, the IU master metered for a large 6-inch meter. So someone using $400,000 would see about a $655.39 increase for about 47% there. Okay, we included irrigation as well at a small 3/4 inch. So 5,000 gallons would see about a 97.3%. And these reflect, as I mentioned before, that four-time cap, all the way up to 120%. And that concludes the presentation on the cost of service and rate design. Thank you so much for your time.
All right, thank you. And I think we'll hold questions till the end, like we were saying. And so now I'm going to talk a little bit about what this may look like on your typical residential bill. I think we just looked at a lot of numbers and looked at a lot of graphs, and I think your average resident would like to see, what's my bill going to look like? So here's my bill, and we projected those changes on my bill. I have a 3/4 inch meter. I, in this billing cycle, used three units or 3,000 gallons. I have a small cart for sanitation. And my bill would go from being, it was 7101 that month, it would have been 7535 for that month with the proposed changes. All right. And now I'm also going to present some water and sewer, water and sewer rate survey that was recently completed by Crowe. What this is, it's a survey of the combined water and sewer rate for cities and towns in Indiana with populations over 25,000. So as you can see here, our combined water and sewer rate is currently 24th of the 39 cities and towns with populations over 25K. Our proposed rate increase would not change that standing. And in fact, there are many rate increases pending in these other cities and towns as indicated by the little 2 in parentheses to your far right there in the chart. So that would drop Bloomington even further down on this list, even with our pending rate increase. Here is that same survey, but this is just for the water portion or water rates. So currently, our water rate is in the lower third of this survey, and our proposed rate increase would put us temporarily at 25th, again, considering that many towns and cities have those pending rate increases that would pull them further up. This is just, I know, we've been asked a lot where we compare to other cities and towns, and I think it's helpful to see this. So with that, I am going to do a fairly brief overview of our capital improvement plan because I'd like to talk about what we're spending the money on. So this is in three parts. The first part is water treatment plant projects, so projects that are specific to our plant. And then we'll talk about projects that are specific to the distribution system. And then third, we'll talk about the Winston Thomas Service Center. The first portion, water treatment plant projects, is for a total of $30.7 million. These projects include electrical upgrades, including phases one and two, along with SCADA and instrumentation upgrades. What this is, is projects that will update obsolete systems, increase resiliency, and provide enhanced cybersecurity at our plants. We have sedimentation basin rehabilitations, which will restore critical water clarification equipment, improving the efficiency of early treatment processes. This project will enhance CBU's ability to remove organic and inorganic materials from the raw water drawn from Lake Monroe, helping to address seasonal taste and odor issues. Our next big project is chemical building improvements and feed line replacement. These projects address treatment reliability and staff safety, along with restoring a safe and sustainable fluoride delivery system. Next, we have our high-service pump rebuilds and variable frequency drives. Our high-service pump rebuilds will provide redundancy and increase resiliency in our treatment process. The addition of these variable frequency drives will help prevent service interruptions by preventing the wear on our pipes at the plant and throughout our system. We also have maintenance projects, which includes the completion of an asset management system that will allow for improved, oh, I clicked on the wrong one, that will allow for improved maintenance assessment and replacement practices, improving the longevity and integrity of our critical equipment at the plant. We have treatment plant water handling and delivery updates that have the addition of air quality monitoring to improve worker safety, maintenance to address leaks in our pipe gallery, and the replacement of a backwash header valve actuator. This will also provide funds for item required tank inspections and maintenance. We also have a bypass pumping improvements project. This resiliency project will establish a contingency for lake withdrawals should the main intake tower suffer mechanical failure, ensuring our ability to continue water production. This also includes a residual project, which will have a backwash pump replacement that will improve the cleaning efficiency and consistency of our filter cleaning at the Monroe plant, helping to maintain our water quality and reliable treatment capacity. Next, we have our distribution system maintenance totaling $34.4 million. This is in essentially two parts. One is our booster station and storage tank rehabilitations and upgrades. Upgrades to our booster stations and tanks are going to help ensure consistent water pressure and flow throughout our system. This will also include the addition of emergency generators, which will improve our preparedness and reliability during natural disasters, electrical grid issues, or other emergencies. The second component of our distribution system maintenance projects are water main projects, maintenance, testing, and replacement. This will replace aging water mains and servicing valves. It means that we'll have fewer service interruptions and boil water advisories for our rate payers. This will include hydrant maintenance and testing, ensuring our water is available when it's needed most by our emergency personnel. And then finally, a total of $18.7 million will go towards our water funding, will be the portion of water funding the new service center. So CBU has outgrown our current facility in regards to personnel, equipment, and adequate inventory storage. We want to build a purpose-built service center to improve logistics for field crews, allowing for faster deployment and better emergency response. This will also allow for stronger protection of our capital assets, such as our specialized service vehicles, which are currently being stored in the elements. Building the service center that's going to meet our needs moving forward is an investment that will save resources over time. And by investing now and setting, we hope to be setting ourselves up for operational excellence, fiscal responsibility, responsibility, and community resilience. We are happy to take any questions now about anything. Are there council member questions right now? Councilmember Rallo.
Yeah, my first one is about, so it seems to me that we're maintaining the same debt service over time. Is that correct? And instead of retiring debt, which we would have, we're going to extend it into the future. Could you describe what the length of the bonds are and what the, you know, what the interest would be over that period?
Right, yep. And just to clarify, the bonds that are currently outstanding will retire. What we're planning on is issuing new debt to fill in that debt service. And we're proposing debt that would be issued at a 20-year term length, and right now we're estimating the coupon at 5%. We won't be selling bonds till '26 or '28, so it's very hard to tell in the future what that might be. 5% is the normal coupon rate that bonds are sold at, and it might be sold at a premium or a discount, and that will all be determined at the time of the bond sale.
Not the best time to have a bond sale necessarily because of interest rates, but I guess my question was, then what is the total amount over that 20 years?
Over, oh, let me do some quick math.
In other words, what will we be paying ultimately?
Yep, so it's basically over two bond issuances, the proposed 2026 and the proposed 2028. And let me, so that looks like it would be about $103 million in total payments, but we're financing approximately $54 million worth of projects with that. So $103 million of total debt service and $54 million of principal repayment.
Okay.
Or, sorry, that will be a little bit higher. I was just saying the project amount, there's actually capitalized interest and other things that are involved with that. So just go with my $103 million total payback, but you'll be funding $54 million worth of projects. But there's capitalized interest, cost of issuance, other items that would be included in that bond issuance.
Yeah, okay. I have other questions, but I can wait.
Councilmember, sorry.
Thank you. I don't know who the question's for, but thank you so much for, I think, the super informative presentation and also the many presentations leading up to this point and the work that you're doing in ensuring that our water facilities are strong. I have quite a few questions, but I'll sort of group them. The question, my first sort of set of questions is around rate shock, and you specifically talked about, there's a term used gradualism in setting certain rates. And so we propose this overall 30.5 increase, but there's sort of varying impacts, if I understood correctly. And that was the time when I was like, I don't know what that sentence meant, but there was the sort of varying impacts by class. And I'm kind of interested in why we seem to have selectively applied the sort of gradualism concept, particularly to like things like irrigation, but not to like IU or wholesale customers who are going to experience large jumps.
Yeah, sure. I will take a crack at it. And Danica, if you have anything to add, feel free. But so essentially, we put a cap on just irrigation because that, so the cap is representative of our total revenue requirement of 30.5%. So four times that revenue requirement was the cap we put on irrigation at the 122%. And that's for the volumetric, which is, I think, the non-fixed percentage, right? So there was that big, the slide with all the numbers on it. And so that cap was applied to irrigation because irrigation... And so that cap was applied to irrigation, because irrigation was the only one that was that high. So we're avoiding rate shock by putting that cap on it. In the past, we've capped irrigation when we've done these rate adjustments. We've capped irrigation to, I believe, two times in the past, and it hasn't, we haven't quite met the cost of service. And so we are increasing it to a four-times cap to hope to gradually meet their cost of service for irrigation. And I should explain that irrigation is their specific irrigation customer class with specific irrigation meters. We're not talking about people watering their gardens. I just want to make that clear.
The cap, like when we're, like, what exactly, like, explain, explain to us like we're five, what a cap is here.
Sure, yeah. So when we looked at the cost of service, if we just took it for what the data said, irrigation would take up 188%, whereas...
180% of what?
Yeah, yeah, okay, good point, okay. Eighty, 188% of what they're, what they were previously paying. And so when you disperse it among, among the different customer classes, we're dispersing that total revenue requirement among the different customer classes, right? And so the percents that you're seeing are the percent change from what they're currently paying compared to what their, what their cost of service would be based on our revenue requirement. And so without a cap, irrigation, irrigation's increase based on its cost of service would be 188%. But we, it, not only did we decide, but it's also kind of industry practice to avoid rate shock.
But where's the, and I will stop asking this line of questioning here, but like, where's the, where's that line at which rate shock considerations kick in? Because, you know, 50%, and later I'll ask some questions about elasticity, but like the, like the, you know, if we, if we get to a, like, what is the marker where you go, oh, we're in rate shock territory?
That's a great question. My understanding is that that's around two times your revenue requirement. And that is what we've previously capped irrigation at. But we're continuing to not allow it meet its... Yes. If you want to explain this, you might explain it better.
No, no, you're doing great. Specifically on that point, we have to go in front of the Indiana Utility Regulatory Commission, and it's just been historical practice that anything that's two times the revenue requirement is considered rate shock.
Got it.
And so all the other summaries that Danica had shown, they were all kind of almost in line with what the rate increase was.
Yep.
But except for irrigation, as Kat was explaining.
Got it, understood. Thank you so much.
Other questions? Councilmember Piedmont Smith.
Yeah, and looking at the, the capital improvement plan, so that adds up to about $84 million. But the, the basis for the CROW study on the slides was $54.5 million with bonds and then $28.4 million with extensions and replacements. So that's only $82.9 million. So it's a little bit off of the $84 million capital improvement plan. So is, is that on purpose, or is that, what happens to the last $1 million that was needed for the plan?
Yeah, yeah, the minute it ends up going, so we're doing $54 million in bonding of that $84. And then approximately $28.4 million is being funded with revenues on an annual basis. And then, sorry, there is a $1.2 million that we included in the capital improvement plan, but they are truly operational in matters, and it's already being taken care of in the operating budget. So if you're talking about that $1.2 million, that, that's what that differential is.
All right, thank you. I have lots of other questions, but I can wait.
Are there first round questions? I have some questions, but let's go ahead with Councilmember Rallo.
Well, I just wanted to suggest, I think there may be people waiting here, some of the left or online, who might have comments on this that we might go to at some point soon and then come back to council for more questions.
Motion.
Yeah, it's not a motion. I guess I'm hearing the preference from a couple of councilmembers to have public comment now and then have more questions after the public comment. So I think that I want to ask one question before we do that, and so that'll be like a first round of councilmember questions, and then we'll go to public comment. It kind of follows what Councilmember Rallo was asking about the bond stuff, which is also kind of separate. But I guess I'm kind of wondering, like, how much of this increase is due to bond-related projects as opposed to, like, standard cost of service? Because I guess, like, I feel like the way it's been, the way the economy is right now, like, I mean, things like cost more than they used to. We increased salaries, all of those things. But then there's also these outstanding projects that also need to be done that will require bonding and then require repayment. So I'm just wondering if part of this increase is because of those large projects that need to be done to maintain our infrastructure? And then how much of the increase is because of that kind of long-term maintenance and upkeep versus the standard costs of things increasing?
Yeah, so that's a hard thing to dissect and to give you a good answer. But what I'm, what we're trying to say is that you need about $6.5 million additional revenues. And we're saying we're going to be issuing the differential between $7.1 and $1.7 million in additional debt to fund that capital projects. So by funding your capital projects, we're maintaining debt service at $7.1 million. If we don't have a rate increase, you would not be able to issue that much debt, and you wouldn't be able to continually invest in your utility with ongoing capital projects. So I don't have that specific number for you for that differential, but we are basically trying to increase revenues by $6.5 million total, and that includes a component of debt and some components of operation and maintenance increasing. I don't think I answered your question.
I, I'm not sure that you could have, but I think you took a good stab at it. Thank you. So with that, let's, let's go ahead and go to public comment, and then we'll have more rounds of councilmember questions after. So if there are members of the public who would wish to make a comment regarding ordinance 202535, if you're in chambers, go ahead and come to the podium, and then you'll introduce yourself, sign in, and have up to three minutes. If you're online, go ahead and raise your hand using the reactions tab or send a chat message to the host. Let's go ahead and start here in chambers, since there's somebody at the podium. Go ahead.
Good evening again, Madam President. This is Christopher M. G. from the Greater Bloomington Chamber of Commerce. Before I start, I, sometimes people get confused and text me later, the chamber's position tonight is neutral, so we are not taking a stand. I just want to say it was a wonderful presentation today. I learned quite a bit, kind of goes into some of the statements I have, and I have a little bit clearer, clearer view of that. And I, and one thing, having toured the water treatment plant here and then touring other treatment plants, the need for capital investment is clear, and I think it may make a great case for that and why we need to invest in that. And those improvements cost ratepayers. Our concerns a little bit is how it's structured and the impact on the business community. From a business perspective, you know, commercial industrial customer is going to face a 50% increase. That's like more than double than the residential increase that's around 20%. And for many businesses, this is a little bit dramatic in it. It doesn't, I think, obviously go to the 2% shock rate that it has defined here tonight. And Sari sort of mentioned this and the gradualism, but, you know, if we were having our way, this would be much more sort of gradual in that and a more predictive approach. I don't know if rate cases align with that as much as we'd like, but avoiding sudden spikes and financial disruptions. The economy is very sensitive. There's tariffs. Everything's costing more. So keeping Bloomington's business climate competitive and welcoming is one thing that we want to do. I also just noticed the Indiana University disparity on, and what local businesses and smaller utilities would see. And meanwhile, I think we have always had to remember that students do live on, on campus, and they are residents here, and they align with the rest of the community as well. But I just want to appreciate all the investment and time that went into this. The benefits, you know, definitely have an essential service for our community. It's just the surprise cost a little bit on the business community on what this is going to look like. I appreciate your time tonight deliberating in this long meeting.
Thank you. I don't see anybody else here in chambers. Is there anybody with a hand raised on Zoom? Okay. And nobody else in chambers. All right, thank you. That was our public comment then for ordinance 202535. So we'll return to council then for round two of questions. Councilmember Sari.
Ah, thank you, thank you. The, my next sort of set of questions are around the dependency. So there's a sort of timing and dependency thing for the IURC, which is a confusing acronym for people in Bloomington, the Indiana Universal Rate Commission or something. And there's been a lot of movement at the, at the state level. I know that Governor Braun has made some statements around, you know, wanting to make these reforms to the IURC, et cetera, et cetera. What happens here if we pass this, but it's, everything's dependent on IURC, right? So, so I guess in many ways, I'm trying to inquire around, because what I haven't heard, both in the public sessions and the, and the meetings here, is like, the, whatever the antithesis argument is here, I get there's a one side of like, we don't do it, right? So if there, if we don't do it, we get the sort of terror of, you know, too much ammonia in our, in our centers during football games or something and that, you know, and cybersecurity threats. Like, I get it, we have, we have a lot of serious issues, and I'm not trying to minimize those. But like, what are the alternatives that we've explored in terms of, you know, are there alternative rate structures? Mr. M. G. just mentioned maybe like a more phased approach. Like, are there other things that we've thought about here that, that we sort of arrived at? No, this is really the only way that we can go about, I think, what we all agree are very needed investments into our water infrastructure that are going to become more expensive and more needed. So could you maybe speak a little bit to, you know, what else might have been on the table that was rejected as not as good of an option, if anything?
I, I don't know if during my time as director, there were other options that were put on the table besides potentially phasing. It was decided that phasing would not be in the best interest of the utility right now. As you can see from our capital improvement projects list, a lot of those projects are pretty dire. Our water cash situation, I presented the budget here recently, is also in a pretty dire state. So we didn't think that phasing the rate adjustments would benefit the utility.
Thank you so much. And just as a follow-up there, like, what happens if IURC is either delayed or, or, you know, we get some type of adverse ruling? Do we have some contingency plans? And similarly, like, the question with the bonding, like, so how does this interact with our abilities to bond if, for example, it's delayed past August?
So I will address contingency if, as far as delay goes. And I think we can talk about bonding, and maybe Jennifer can talk more in detail about our bonding options, which I believe are slim. So currently, what we're doing is very closely managing our water cash balances. It's very a one-in-one-out situation right now. We are managing any expense that is not a recurring operations and maintenance expense that needs to happen either at our distribution system or at the plant. We have to take into account everything that we're doing that's outside of normal operating expenses, and that includes sudden repairs or replacements. And so that is what we've been doing to get this far. But further delays, our contingency right now is to continue to manage that water cash balance, and if necessary, take a loan from sewer until we're able to get some rate adjustment. And to talk about the bonds.
So on the bonding side, what we're trying to do in order to keep the rate increase lower, we are using capitalized interest, which means any of the interest that's owed between the time of bonding in 2026 and when we start paying for the interest out of rates in 2029 will be funded from the bond issuance. So really, the time of the bonding doesn't really affect, it just affects when they can actually start on the projects.
Final follow-up on this line of questions. So the, so the, what I was interested in then, because we get all of this sort of increased degrees of freedom once some of those kick in, do we envision being able in post-2029, being able to lower rates? Or like, you know, is this sort of, you know, necessary to meet the times and, you know, it's all increasing from there?
It would need to be evaluated at that point in time. I would just say, in my 30 years of experience, I've done hundreds of rate increases and probably four rate decreases.
Thank you.
Thank you. Other second round questions? Councilmember Rallo.
Well, this is kind of, it might, if I would presume, might get to, it's a variation of councilmember, Council President Stossberg's question. So a certain amount of this rate increase is going to be used for maintenance, cost of materials increase, et cetera. Some of it's going to be used for expansion of facilities, right? So there's a $19 million share of the new facility that utilities is going to be assuming. Are there other expansion of facilities besides that? In other words, are we bonding for other types of projects that would expand facilities as opposed to just maintenance, cost of materials or replacement, things like that?
No, the, all of the projects that are at the plant, as far as, if you're wondering about expanding plant capacity, no, all of these projects simply maintain and replace the equipment at the plant to maintain our current capacity.
Okay. But a share of this bonding is going to go for the new facility?
Yes. No, so that'll be a separate, yes, a share of this bonding will go to the service center, which is our, which will be a larger facility for our operations. Sorry, you're, you're asking about growth, so I'm just trying to be clear that it's not to expand the water plant.
Yes, I'm sorry, I meant to say the new service center. Okay, and what's the longevity of that new service center?
So the service center is currently at 50% design, and part of that process was to try to predict the needs of the utility for the next 20 to 30 years.
Okay, so a couple of decades out?
Yes.
Okay. All right, that's all I have for now.
Yeah, I just want to understand the total debt of the water utility. I think in the ordinance or, yeah, I think in the whereas clause, there's a listing of other bonds that are outstanding. And I added them up, and I get like $34,490,700. Is that an accurate total for the current bonds for the water utility?
It, I, my quick adding shows that there was $36 million outstanding at the beginning of this year.
Okay.
Yeah, sorry, I actually have that number here. Well, including the long-term, long-term lease, at the end of 2024, you had $39 million worth of debt outstanding.
at the end of 2024, you had $39 million worth of debt outstanding.
What's the long term lease?
That's the E S G and the solar leases.
Oh, okay. But just counting the bonds, it's about 34 and a half?
Two million. Actually, I come up with, it was 39 million and it's almost 2 million worth of long term lease, so that'd be 37 million.
So it feels like I'm missing something then. I was just adding up. I know in our, in our council memo, the staff was, pulled out the amounts for the bonds that are still outstanding. And I added that up, so.
And, sorry, yeah, I was giving you the numbers as of January 1st, and there's been a principal payment on July 1st since then. So looking through this, we did have, we did have at least $3 million worth of principal payments during that time period. So that might account for much of that difference.
Okay. And currently, you're, about 25% of revenues go towards debt service, is that right? I think I saw that in the pie chart from.
Yep, let me look here.
And that's?
Yes, on the revenue requirement, seven, yeah, about 25%.
Yeah. Okay.
Will be going towards, 25% of the debt service is, well, sorry, debt service is 25% of the total revenue requirement. That's the best way to say it.
I have another question, but it's not related, so should I wait?
Sure. Yeah, yeah, wait till around three. I think, I have a feeling there's going to be around three. Other questions on round two? Okay, I have one if I can find it again, because I just, I just scrolled to where councilmember Piedmont Smith was talking about. My thing is gone. On the slideshow that you gave us, and so that's what I'm trying to find again, you have the, the income statement highlights with 2022 with revenue being more than expenses and 2023, it flipped because of that shared services. And so, and then in 2024, again, there was more revenue than expenses. And so it kind of feels weird seeing that chart and going, oh, now we have to raise rates a whole bunch, even though two out of the last three years, there's been higher revenue than expenses. So if you could just talk maybe a little bit about 2025 projections right now in terms of that, and also help me understand what those shared services expenses that kind of came up in 2023, like, what those are and like, how often that appears. I think that that would be helpful in my understanding, like, this particular slide.
Yes. So going back, I also had a slide there where I showed test year of 2024, and we made adjustments of $3.2 million to bring it up to what we think it's going to be in 2025. Of those, that $3.2 million with adjustments, 1,000,000, $1,250,000 of that has to do with salaries and wages increases. And then 836,000 has to do with the shared services agreement between the utility and the city. And then 477,000 of it has to do with the payment in lieu of taxes that the utility pays to the city for its property, its payment in lieu of taxes. It's because it's a municipal utility. It doesn't actually pay property taxes. It just is estimating what they would have paid had they had been a property taxpayer. And so they provide funds to the city in lieu of taxes. So the combination of those two items make up the bulk of the adjustments that we are making. Now I need to go back and make sure I'm answering your question. I would, I would actually have to ask one of these two to talk to what the shared services actually is and how that affects.
Are you saying that on the next slide, that adjusted rate is the expected expenses this year?
Mm-hmm, yes.
Okay, and, but where, where's the expected revenue this year in that comparison? Because the slide that I referenced, I mean, it has that comparison between revenue and expenses. So like, our expenses aren't really meaningful without our revenue attached to them.
That's correct. So that's, that's part of our problem, that we're bleeding money right now, and that's why we're going through the rate increase. At 2025, you're not going to have that implementation of a new rate, and it won't happen until 300 days after we make filing, which is basically 10 months. So whenever we make a filing after passage, we won't see the implications of that rate increase. There's just a time lag that happens. So 2025, they, as Kat was saying, they're trying to monitor how much money they're actually spending, trying to keep costs as low as possible. But these costs are increasing, and that's what the case that we're proving here is, that we need a rate increase. They might not be doing as many capital projects, they're just really monitoring their cash flow this year and 2025.
Okay, so the short answer, 2025, our revenue is going to be significantly lower than our expenses?
If you would fully expand your expenses. Now, they're going to make cutbacks because there isn't that revenue there, or they're going to have to borrow money in order to make those actual operating expenses that they need to do.
Okay.
Can I help answer this? So you asked about the differences between 2023 and 2024 and how we went from in the negative, then back up to in the positive, and what that projection was for 2025. I think we discussed kind of that projection for 2025, but I think it's important to think about. So we made those payments, right? The pilot that we were talking about and the interdepartmental. We did not make those in 2024, which is why it is not as, so our expenses aren't as high because we were not making those payments.
So those are those shared expenses that were referenced in 2023 that then we didn't make in 2024, but then we're making it again in 2025?
Right.
So is that an every other year kind of thing? Or is that something that should be every year, but we don't always have the money for it? Like?
It should be every year. Not having the money for it has not necessarily been the reason it's not been paid. It has been, the timing of it, it has to be approved by the USB, and there were multiple meetings where they asked for additional clarification. And so we are working with the controller now to make sure that that interdepartmental is as transparent as possible, and we'll be bringing that back to them soon.
Okay, so is it the kind of thing then where like, if you don't pay it one year, then essentially you pay double the next year to make up for it?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. That, that helps my clarity around the meaningfulness of that chart.
Yeah, sorry, I thought that would help.
Yeah. Okay, is there another round of councilmember questions? Councilmember Sari?
Thank you very much. Elasticity. So we're asking, we're making these assumptions that rates will sort of, that rates will not change people's habits. What happens if they do? So if you increase the rates and people stop consuming, like, and, yeah, what do we, how do we do this?
Yeah. One, actually, I'm going to ask if Danica is still online, if she can speak to that, because in the rate design, there's certain assumptions that are made on what's fixed costs, what's variable costs. And anyhow, Danica, you there?
Yes, I am. Thanks, Jennifer. So I guess speaking to the elasticity, we did not account for any of that directly in reviewing some of the billing and consumption records. Demands were generally pretty stable over the years with some of the historical rate increases and things of that nature, as well as customer usage. And so anything, any significant changes, I guess, in demand would ultimately be factored into some of those future studies. And.
Do we have control of the fixed rate portion of it?
We do. Yep, absolutely.
And so how did, like, how have we thought about balancing that out to account for elasticity? You know, particularly in a time when people are super sensitive to rate increases and it's becoming hyper politicized. The reason why I'm asking all these questions actually is exactly that. I think that this, I mean, it's very clear that what we're doing today, actually, I mean, it's going to take 300 days for any change to happen to people's rates. But I think that the way that'll probably be reported is that, you know, Bloomington votes to raise your rates by 50% or something like that. And so I do think that that sort of engagement very clearly with, with the general public around, hey, like, this is a very careful consideration, is a point I was making earlier. So anyways, I was just trying to get this sense of, you know, that balance and that, and that complex equation that you put up there between, you know, the fixed rate, the variable rates, and why we think that we've reached like the right balance there, I think, is quite relevant. Look at myself rather than you. I'm sorry, I can't see you.
No, that's okay. Yeah, absolutely. And as we go through kind of that rate development, and I had some of those sides up that kind of talked about, you know, the scaled pieces and the costs that are included in that fixed versus the usage component there, to your point, to be able to kind of, to balance those, as well as kind of what we talked about on the irrigation side as well.
Fantastic. So I'll make one so that I don't waste time in coming back to it. My very last question is just around the considerations of affordability measures. So I think that, you know, the current packet doesn't mention anything around like lifeline rates, customer assistance programs, something like that. So maybe something would you consider once, you know, in 300 days, you know, coming back to us and having a discussion about how we might create some, you know, something to protect our residents, particularly who might be most affected by rate increases?
Yeah, I actually can speak to that now. So we're currently making improvements on our financial assistance program. As I've discussed in previous presentations about our budget, we've reduced the number of barriers that exist. For example, previously, customers could not seek assistance if they had been shut off. We are, we are working on removing that barrier now. We're updating our, working on updating our contracts to be able to do that. In addition, we increased our, like, the income, sorry, the income qualification for our assistance program from 200 to 300% of the federal poverty guidelines. We are hoping to, we, we are budgeting $100,000 next year in our financial assistance program. And I, if we're able, if these changes help, the way that I'm hoping that they will, we'll be able to spend every penny of it.
Amazing. Thank you so much. I will stop asking you questions now.
Other, councilmember Rallo?
This might be my last question. So I want to just make a proposition and see if we're, have points of agreement on this. And that is, so your capital improvement plan for five years is $85 million. 54 of it is being financed by debt, by bonding. 19 of that, about 35%, is for the new facility. So that new facility, according to your capital improvement plan, isn't needed because you've outgrown the old facility, right? We've reached some capacity and it's now being exceeded, and now you need a new facility. Not your fault, we've been on that trajectory, right? But my, my point is, is that this debt service, and by the way, that new facility is $44 million, but it's going to be shared by other, right, by Public Works and.
Oh, no, 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 no.
No, not Public Works, who's going to be, is it a $44 million facility?
No, no, the, this, the funding for this utility is shared by the other utility funds. So the financing for this would be, so the water portion, well, that 18.4 is the water portion versus the sewer and storm portions of funding. This is just a facility for the utility.
So there's not going to be anything else at Winston Thomas, just your facility?
That we are financing?
No, 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 that the city is financing, that the city is planning.
I can't speak to what the city's financing.
What's that?
I can't speak to what the city's financing at Winston Thomas.
Well, I guess, okay, all right, well, let's just.
Sorry, through the general fund.
The point is, is that we are projecting debt into the future to pay for past growth. So we have grown as a city, and now we've exceeded the growth, and now we have to continue paying debt. And that's everybody in Bloomington to greater or lesser degrees. And I appreciate the fact that residents are paying less relative to other users. But the point is, is that we're subsidizing growth. Is that, is, are we in a point of agreement with that?
I'm not sure. Can you further explain subsidization of growth?
Well, you've exceeded your capacity. We are now building a larger facility. That's being paid for by debt.
So.
And that's reflected in people's utility rates. Therefore, people are paying for the expansion of a facility for, for growth, because we've reached that point of needing a new facility. Is that, is that a good assumption?
So ratepayers are paying for the growth of our utility. I can agree to that. Yeah.
Yeah. So I guess, I'm glad we're in agreement, because this is something I want to keep bringing up, is that whether it's water, or sewer, or stormwater, or police, or sanitation, or whatever, people are paying for the expansion of our city. And they ought to be aware of that. We ought to be aware of that, and we ought to be trying to internalize that. In other words, you know, it's not fair, I don't think, for current residents to be paying for future growth. I mean, maybe they prefer a bigger city, but that's fine. But I think that that cost should be borne by those who are actually profiting from that growth. And so it's kind of a qualm. I'm sorry about that, but that's, that's where I'm, I'm going with this. And so I wanted to just, this is a very expensive, you know, this is a big rate increase. We had one a couple of years ago. I think it was incremental to, it was 17%, I think, 17 and a half or something over four years. But the point is, is that this expansion comes at a cost, and it's reflected in things like taxes, and it's reflected in fees. So, thank you.
Thank you. Other questions? I don't even remember what round we're on right now, maybe for? Councilmember Piedmont Smith?
Yes, you talked about the, what was it, customer assistance program?
Yeah.
What about businesses or customers that are using the irrigation, water for irrigation? Is there any assistance program for them? Because, I mean, it's not just residential that's going to be affected. It's also our, our business community and our farming community.
So the current assistance program is specifically for residential customers who meet the income requirements. We partner with SCAP, so SCAP approves those applications. So no, there's not a financial assistance program for commercial, general service, or irrigation, et cetera. When you ask about irrigation, because irrigation is seeing the steepest rate increase. So irrigation is a customer class that is easier to conserve than perhaps a residential home or potentially a hospital. And I think STANTEC, I'm not sure if Danica or Andy are here on the line to talk a little bit more about that, but, you know, there was, that was kind of behind the reasoning to increase to the four times rate increase cap for irrigation, because that type of increase can help influence usage. And that is a customer class where we feel like you will have, you can see better results in a rate signal to maybe conserve usage.
Can you educate me a little more as to who makes up that customer class of irrigation?
Yeah. So the customer class of irrigation is primarily, so there's some in. Yeah. So the customer class of irrigation is primarily, so there's some in residential, some in general service, and quite a few IU accounts as well. And the golf course.
And what is general service?
General service is commercial and industrial. It's the combined customer class.
So it's not irrigation, when I think of irrigation, I think of agriculture. Is that not, I mean, within city limits, we don't have much of that, I guess?
Primarily, it's landscaping.
Okay.
Or, you know, golf courses, landscaping, specifically, you're, like, like I said, these meters are specific to irrigation, and they're typically your landscaping and golf course type things. Yeah.
Okay. I have another unrelated question. Should I hold it?
Are there other questions from councilmembers? Go for it, Councilmember Piedmont Smith.
Okay, I'm looking at the STANTEC slides, and the proposed rate summary has, for example, for residential, 19.8% increase. But then when I look at the cost of services summary, the residential is an 18.9% increase. So the percentages, I mean, that's not a big difference. If we look at general service, the proposed rate summary is 42% increase, cost of service summary is 33% increase. So there's no, there's not a direct correlation there. So could you explain that, please?
Absolutely. So when we put a irrig, so when we put a cap on irrigation, it has to go somewhere. And so whatever, we're not charging irrigation to meet their cost of service, we're spreading among the other customer classes. And the way that it is spread, and correct me if I'm wrong, Danica, but the way that it was spread among the customer classes is the amount of irrigation customers in each of those customer classes. It's based on the amount of, so you can have a residential customer class with an irrigation meter? Yeah, go on.
Yeah, I'm going to jump in quick. It was based on the amount of usage for each of those specific customer classes. So just the build, consumption amount for each of those was how it was reallocated.
So, I'm sorry, I'm still trying to just understand how this works. So if you have, let's say you have a business that, you know, has a nice property and you want to irrigate the lawn. So, so the, the business is in general services, but part of their bill, like, for, for the water in their bathrooms or whatever, is, is billed in one way, as one customer class, and the part for their lawn is billed a different way? Is that right? I did not know that.
Yes. Yes, yes, it is billed a different way. It's based on the specific irrigation type meter.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other councilmember questions? Okay. Since we already did have public comment on this, in the midst of our councilmember questions, I think that that means we're down to a period of councilmember comment. So any councilmembers want to make a comment around this legislation? Councilmember Rallo?
I already took my quamen, but I, I'll just say a little bit more, and that is, right now, at the federal level, you know, we're facing a debt showdown. And I assume that they'll work it out. That is, no one wants to default at the federal level. But on the trajectory that we're going, that the federal debt is exponential, growing at a trillion dollars every 100 days. It's hard to ignore, right? I mean, we, this is related. I mean, our exposure to debt is local, too. And I would have liked to have seen that debt paid down over time, because I don't know what the future looks like. We're being told that right now we're in a fiscal squeeze. And so, but we're going to continue borrowing in order to expand, because we need to. Okay. It's hard to say no, because it's not, because apparently we're at that point where we need larger facilities, et cetera. But, you know, my job is also looking at the exposure of this city in terms of what may happen in the future. And we're going to be locked in with the amount of debt that we have, looks like. So it's a difficult position to be in. That's why I bring up the fact that if we continue expanding, and we've been told in some quarters that either debt or growth is inevitable, or it's benign, or it's great. Well, it comes at a cost. And you're seeing it tonight, the cost, we've just been, we've been told what the cost is. I do appreciate the fact that because of the, you know, the differential classes, that the residential customers are going to be spared most of it. That is a good thing, and I appreciate that. So I will likely support this, because I don't have a, a sound fiscal argument right now, I mean, detailed, in terms of how to transfer those costs to those who assume more growth. But at this point, I simply want to say that it comes at a cost. And we're going to have to think about internalizing it, instead of just passing it off to current residents. So I, I will support this. I appreciate the presentation. It was very informative, very carefully done, and thorough. So, thank you.
Other councilmember comments? Councilmember Assari?
I'll, I'll just say, you know, that when, I think that sort of headline figure of rate increases is always difficult. And so I think that from, you know, on, for individuals, when we hear about 30% increases, like, it's natural to worry. And I've seen a lot of reports out there on, you know, proposals to increase IU by 55, and your rates by 30, and, but I, but I think, I think that's, it's what's been really useful about this very long but thorough conversation, is that we've, I think, made very clear, and I think you've made a very clear argument, that this ordinance isn't just about, you know, it's, it's not just like a wanton ordinance to raise rates, but, but it's very specifically about making sure that Bloomington continues to have safe, reliable water for decades to come. And so we're really making sure that our water system, I think, I think right now, like, our water system, what the point that I heard throughout this evening, is that it's, you know, every dollar that comes in is going directly out, and that's not allowing us to make needed investments. You know, we really don't have a cushion to do that, and that this is sort of an unsustainable situation to be in. We need this adjustment, I think, to pay for repairs, replacements, upgrades, that will keep water clean and flowing to our homes, schools, businesses, et cetera. I think we have a lot of tough questions tonight, as is our responsibility as a council, to make sure that these rate changes are fair, and that they don't fall too heavily on one group, and that, you know, we sort of thought about the consequences of sort of these changes to our residents, to our businesses, et cetera, and also thinking about the agency that we have as a city government also to help those who might fall outside of some of these considerations. And so I think, having gone through all of that, I'm very happy to support this, this ordinance. And certainly not easy. I certainly don't like anything that raises cost to our residents, but I think that the argument here is very clear. It sort of passes that necessity test. And so water is not optional. It's the foundation about everything else that we do. And so just wanted to appreciate you all for the thorough work that you're doing, and any support that we can offer, and, and making that, and making that communication clear to the people that we represent. Very happy to support in that. So thank you again. And thank you for enduring our questions.
Thank you. Other councilmember comments?
All right, I have one. I'll not repeat what Councilmember Assari just said about water being an essential service, but it is an essential service, and nobody wants a rate change. But it's also really important that we manage to keep this infrastructure solid and consistent, and serve residents adequately in terms of access to clean water. And I think that it's really valuable thing to kind of understand that, like, what we pay for our water bill is not subsidized in any way. But it's also true that, I mean, they're not making a profit either. And so one of the things in that list that, that you put about where we land in the middle, so I used to live in Richmond, Indiana, and the water that's there is actually a public, or a private utility, instead of a public utility. Interestingly, they have a public electric utility. So in the transitioning to Bloomington, I pay less for water and a lot more for electricity than I did there. And, you know, that's just something to remember to consider, that we're actually paying for what it is that we use. I also wanted to talk for a minute about what Councilmember Rallo said about growth, because in, in a lot of ways, like what he says, makes sense. But he described ratepayers as paying for growth, and that expanding our city comes at a cost. But I want to clarify that most of our growth recently is related to IU students. And we don't control how many students IU admits, and how many students accept their admission and attend the university and come here. And I used to consider that the population of Bloomington was about half IU students and half permanent residents or long-term residents. But I think that that number is continuing to creep up in terms of percentage. I think that, that there are more, more than half of our population is now IU students. Year after year after year, I hear that they have record numbers of entering students in their classes. And there's an imbalance there in terms of our population with far more, in terms of percentage, IU students than there are permanent residents. And I want to make very clearly, I don't have a problem with IU students, but that imbalances our population in detrimental ways. It imbalances taxation, okay? It imbalances income tax and also property tax, because of the amount of property owned by a state university that doesn't pay property taxes. And I don't think has some kind of a nice pilot program in paying something in lieu of property taxes. It would be nice if they did. Additionally, it affects other entities like schools. If you've been paying attention to school stuff, the schools are losing population, and part of that is because of this imbalance. There's a lot more IU students, and you know what? IU students don't have school-age kids. They don't, they just don't. And so that really has this detrimental effect in terms of the percentage of our population that ends up being, being short-term, temporary residents in a very specific age bracket. And to balance that, we do then need to figure out as a city ways to drive growth in areas that would attract population groups to help balance out, counterbalance, all of those, you know, 18 to 22 or 23-year-olds in terms of population groups. We need to be able to attract young professionals. We need to be able to attract families. We need to be able to diversify our population groups. And that does mean increasing population. And that ultimately then would be of service to the whole population when you think about larger amenities, and institutions and organizations that are going to be of benefit to our whole population. So growth is not as simple as when you grow, you have to pay more. It ends up being a lot more complicated, because maybe you would have to pay more financially in terms of this utility project that we're talking about right now. But we would also pay in other ways, that it's harder to document in terms of actual, like, physical cost, because it's some of those, like, softer things of quality of place that it's harder to calculate. So that is my comment. I'll also be supporting this tonight. I don't, I don't love it. I never will love a rate increase, but I think that it's the only option in terms of keeping our utility viable. If there are no other councilmember comments, if the clerk could please call the roll on ordinance, now I have to find the number, 202535.
Councilmember Zulik?
Yes.
Assari?
Yes.
Rallo?
Yes.
Piedmont Smith?
Yes.
Stasburg?
Yes.
Daley?
Yes.
Thank you. And that passes 6-0. I want to acknowledge right now that it is after 10:30. So according to our rules, to introduce any new pieces of legislation, if I'm remembering correctly, we need to have a two-thirds majority for that. So we will need to do a roll call vote for the introduction of ordinance 202536. Parliamentarian?
I motion for a roll call vote to introduce new legislation.
No, no, just, just...
No.
We just need your usual motion.
Just my usual.
Just your usual motion, but we just need to do a roll call instead of a voice vote tonight, right now, to make sure that we have a two-thirds majority.
Look, it's past my bedtime, and I've had a long, clearly, I've not been on the ball at all tonight. I move that ordinance 2025-36 be introduced and read by the clerk by title and synopsis only.
Second.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second to introduce ordinance 202536. If the clerk could please call the roll on that, that would be great.
Councilmember Rallo?
Yes.
Oh, my God. Piedmont Smith?
No.
Stasburg?
Yes.
Daley?
Yes.
Zulik?
No.
Assari?
Yes.
All right. So that vote is 4-2, and I think that four out of six is two-thirds, which means that it passes. So will the clerk please, did I do that math right?
Yeah, the, the Bloomington Municipal Code says no legislation may be introduced after 10:30 without a two-thirds vote of the members of council. So I think it requires six.
Then, well, is that allowed right now? I'm not sure that that's allowed right now. So if, if our code says that we need a 230, a two-thirds vote of total members as opposed to those present?
Yeah, the, the code doesn't delineate by stating two-thirds of the members present during the meeting. It says two-thirds of the members of the council.
Okay. I think that that means that that motion fails. Councilmember Assari?
Just, just to our colleagues, and I promise I will ask no questions or something, but I, the reason, I think, in respect to our colleagues from Water, we can, we can reconsider a motion. It's totally in code. But the, I would ask us to reconsider the motion, because they have waited here all night long while we debated what we want to name a sausage-sized district in, next to a lake. Like, I kind of feel like we should at least give them the respect of being able to do this. We can limit our questions. But, I mean, at this point, I mean, we can't make them go through this all over again. I just don't think that's, that's fair or respectful.
Is anybody who voted no willing to reconsider? If we need two-thirds majority of council, then that means all six of us have to be unanimous?
I'm happy to change my vote, but, like, is it going to take two more hours, or?
Not at all. No presentation.
Okay. Great. I'm happy to change my vote.
Councilmember Piedmont Smith?
I think that either one of the no votes can call for a revote. I think that's how it works. Ms. Leiner?
Okay.
May I read from the Bloomington Municipal Code?
Yes, please.
When any question has been decided in the affirmative or negative, any member voting with the majority may move a reconsideration of the vote.
I move that we reconsider the motion to introduce ordinance 202536.
I'm sorry, I didn't catch the second on that one. The court, Daley seconded it.
Thank you.
All right. So I think that that would be the clerk calling the roll again on ordinance, on the motion to introduce ordinance 202536.
Councilmember Piedmont Smith?
Yes.
Councilmember Stasburg, I'm sorry. I think that was my name, yes.
Okay. Daley?
Yes.
Zulik?
Yes.
Ms. Sari?
Yes.
And Rallo?
Yes.
Thank you all. I know this is a really long meeting. Will the clerk please read?
Oh, yes. Ordinance 2025-36, an ordinance authorizing the acquisition, construction, and installation by the City of Bloomington, Indiana of certain extensions and improvements to the city's waterworks utility, the issuance and sale of revenue bonds to provide funds for the payment of the cost thereof, and the collection, segregation, and distribution of the revenues of such waterworks utility and other related matters. The synopsis is as follows. This ordinance authorizes the City of Bloomington to issue one or more series of its waterworks revenue bonds in the aggregate principal amount not to exceed $71 million, a portion of which are anticipated to be issued in 2026 and the remainder in 2028. The bonds will be issued to finance all or a portion of the cost of design, engineering, acquisition, construction, equipping, and improvement of capital projects related to the Monroe Water Treatment Plant, the Waterworks Distribution System and Water Main, and a new service center and maintenance buildings and pay costs of issuance of the bonds.
Thank you.
I move ordinance 2025-36 be adopted.
Second. All right. You're up again.
All right. Catherine Zager, Utilities Director, this is an accompanying ordinance to our rate adjustment ordinance that will allow for the utility to bond for our capital improvement projects that were just presented. Today, we have Bradley Bingham from Barnes and Thornburg LP to help explain the bond ordinance and help answer any questions.
Thank you. Are there any councilmember questions? Councilmember Piedmont Smith?
Yeah, just a very broad process question. So the rate increase has to go to the IURC to be approved. So why are we already talking about the bond when we don't know if the rate's going to be approved?
Who wants to answer that?
Mr. Bingham?
Mr. Bingham, you should be able to unmute yourself and speak.
Okay, thank you, thank you. Sorry, I was trying to unmute there. Again, Brad Bingham with Barnes and Thornburg. Great question. The reason is that, just like the rates and charges you've been discussing have to be approved by the IURC, the IURC also has to prove the issuance of any bonds will be payable from the waterworks utility. And so this is really a companion piece of legislation that kind of goes along with the prior measure that was just debated.
Okay, so the two things go to the IURC together?
That's exactly right, yeah. And just a few quick remarks on the ordinance itself. I know it's been a long meeting, but really, the bond ordinance is the contract between the city and the bondholders. As you've heard earlier in various comments, this particular ordinance would authorize the issuance of up to $71 million of waterworks revenue bonds. It's anticipated they would be done in two separate series, each of which would have a term no greater than 20 years. And the proceeds would be used to finance part of the projects identified in the capital improvement plan, which are described in greater detail in Exhibit A of the bond ordinance. And so with that, I'm happy to take any questions you may have on the ordinance itself.
Thank you. Are there other questions by councilmembers?
I have one before we go to a second round. So in the actual, and this is kind of like a technical thing, maybe, in the actual ordinance, in the third whereas clause, it says that the city's obtained estimates prepared and delivered by the engineers of said improvements. And in the actual documents associated with this ordinance, I only saw the project list and not the costs associated with each of them. So in your presentation on the slides, I think I got that answer of those project costs, but I just want to make that clear right now, that the ordinance specifies that those costs are in the materials that were provided, but those materials weren't actually in that, like, package. And like, your memo at the end did not list out those charges separately. And I'm not sure if that was an oversight, or if that slideshow was really intended for both of those ordinances that we just considered. I just want to make sure that that project list is right.
Right. So the project list was, that's shown as Exhibit A. We, in our rate report, have actually listed out the entire capital improvement plan, as what CAT described, that comes to $84 million. And each of those projects are then designated, how we're going to fund them, through the 2026 bonds or the 2028 bonds.
I guess I'm just trying to figure out where that is in our materials.
In the materials.
Like?
It's actually in the revenue requirement report, that's the CROW report, and it's on pages, the capital improvement plan is listed on pages 21, 22, and 23. Thank you.
But Exhibit A doesn't have any costs with it. It refers to Exhibit A.
Correct. Yeah, sorry to interrupt. Exhibit A will list out the projects, but it won't be specific in the actual cost, because eventually, they will bid out these projects and have actual costs. But it is built from this capital improvement plan. It won't actually specify the actual dollar amount per project. And that is just very typical of how bond ordinances are written.
But the whereas clause actually seems to say that it will have those costs per project. Like, that's, I mean, I'd have to get back to it now, but, I mean, that the city has obtained estimates prepared and delivered by engineers employed by the city for the construction of said improvements, additions, and extensions.
Yes, so they made the estimates that went into the capital improvement plan, and then we've sized this bond ordinance so that when we actually do get bids, we'll have the funding for those projects.
Attorney Leiner, do you understand what I'm trying to get at here?
I believe so. You're looking at the second whereas clause.
Third whereas clause.
Third. I don't see where it refers to those cost estimates being in Exhibit A. That's the issue that comes to my mind.
Okay, I guess, yeah, Councilmember Piedmont Smith?
Sorry, I had the same question. That's why I'm jumping in here. So in Section 1, at the end of Section 1 of the actual ordinance, it says, "A description of the proposed improvements, additions, and extensions is set forth on Exhibit A attached here, too, and the project shall be constructed in accordance with the plans heretofore mentioned, which plans are hereby approved." Well, we just have a list. We don't have plans. So that's why it's...I also am a little bit confused why we don't have more details in Exhibit A.
I guess that's where, like, between that whereas clause and between the section, I kind of felt like, okay, Exhibit A should also have those estimations or approximations that were on the slides.
Right.
And so that's where, like, should Exhibit A have those numbers in it that were on the slides? Because like, then when I got the slides, I was like, oh, like, the numbers are somewhere. I mean, clearly, the numbers have to be somewhere, because otherwise, why do you know exactly how much you need to ask for in bonds?
I'd ask Brad, do you have any comments on that?
Yeah. Jennifer, you mentioned earlier, and it is very common that the actual bond ordinance itself just has a very broad description of the types of projects to be financed. There's certainly nothing wrong, if you want to put in all of the detail that, as Jennifer mentioned, on Pages 21 and 22 of her report. What the ordinance is trying to say is that there have been estimates prepared, and that was the basis of the capital improvement plan. We just didn't attach and include all this detail that Crow has shown here in the bond ordinance. And part of it, the reason, is because, as she mentioned, they have to be bid out. So the actual cost may be different than what's actually shown here. These are best estimates based upon the Crow report.
Okay, thank you. I guess I'm satisfied with the concept of the stuff on the slideshow, as long as our attorneys feel like the language in there and how Attachment A is listed is acceptable, like, legally. So if y'all are good with that, then...
Yeah, I don't have any concern, because I don't read this ordinance as indicating that the costs are identified in Exhibit A.
Okay, thank you.
So I think it's okay.
Are there other questions? Councilmember Sari?
Two-second question. Just being sure that SEA 1 impacts the, because I know it has bonding things for the city, the utilities is used as a separate entity under SEA 1, correct? So, okay, so no implications for bonding in other places in the city. Thank you very much.
To clarify for anybody who might not have seen that, we were seeing head nods over there.
I was nodding yes. They're totally separate entities, and SEA 1 did not affect utility bonding capacity or abilities.
Yep. All right, any other questions from councilmembers? All right, let's go ahead and go to public comment then on ordinance 202536. If there's a member of the public who would like to comment on ordinance 202536, if you're in chambers, you can go ahead and approach the podium. If you're online, you can raise your hand using the reactions tab or send a chat message to the host. I do not see anybody moving in chambers. Is there anybody who has raised a hand on Zoom?
We do. I'll unmute him.
Thank you. If you could please state your name for the record, and then you'll have up to three minutes.
The comment is actually for the general session instead of this one. Sorry.
Okay, thank you.
Is for the additional public comment? Is that what you mean? Okay.
Yes.
All right, great. So seeing no public comments on ordinance 202536, going once, going twice. All right, let's return to council for any councilmember comments. Do councilmembers have any comments related to ordinance 202536? Seeing none, will the clerk please call the roll on ordinance 202536? Stasburg?
Yes.
Daley?
Yes.
Zulik?
Yes.
Ms. Sari?
Yes.
Rallo?
Yes.
Piedmont Smith?
Yes.
Thank you. That passes with a vote of 6-0. We are done with our legislation for this evening, moving into the period of additional public comment here at the end. So if there's a member of the public who would like to comment on an item not on the agenda, you can go ahead and make your way to the podium. If you're online, you can go ahead and raise your hand. And as a reminder, if you spoke during the first general period of public comment, then you are not allowed, according to our public comment rules, to speak during this additional period of public comment. So I don't see anybody in chambers moving to the podium. Is there anybody online who would like to make an additional public comment?
I'm unmuted.
Okay, thank you. If you could, when you're unmuted, introduce yourself, and then you'll have up to three minutes. Wait, I think that we can hear you. Can you state your name for the record, and then go ahead with your comment?
[Inaudible].
We have a comment in the chat from Dove that we can read.
Okay, is that the best way?
Yes.
Wonderful. If you could go ahead and read that comment from Mr. Dove, that would be excellent.
There will be a block party at Butler Park at 12:30 PM on Saturday, October 25th, at Rev. Ernest D. Butler Park, 812 West 9th Street. Immediately follows, the West Side tree planting. The party will have food trucks and live music by busman's holiday to elevate the greener near West Side neighborhood. Attendees will also have the chance to win a gift basket at each event, as thanks for their efforts. Event details and registration links are located on the city's Zero in Bloomington webpage. That concludes the message.
Thank you so much for that event announcement. Are there any other, I don't see anybody in chambers moving. Are there any other hands raised on Zoom, or any other comments in the chat? Okay, thank you very much. We are almost at the end. Note on council schedule, next week, we will have, we'll back to Wednesday, October 8th, and we will have our special session for our budget adoption meeting. And then on October 15th, we'll have a deliberation meeting, joint meeting with the Historic Preservation Commission. And our next regular session meeting is on October 22nd. And as we mentioned way back in the beginning of the meeting, we will figure out elected salary stuff, so there might be a potential special meeting in there. Maybe we'll discuss that again on the 22nd. And there's a fiscal committee meeting next week on the 8th at 1:30 to 3:00. At least that's the way it's scheduled right now. Are there any other notes on council schedule? Councilmember Piedmont Smith?
The Committee on Council Processes will meet on Monday, October 6th at 12:15 in the Allison Conference Room.
Wonderful. Thank you so much. Thank you guys for hanging in through this meeting. We are adjourned.